At this time, we'll call the special call meeting to order. Commissioner Long, if you would lead us in the pledge, and Commissioner Henderson is going to lead us in the invocation, please. Commissioner Henderson?
Right now, please.
We're all going to bow our heads, please. Most gracious heaven forbid we come before thee with thanksgiving in our heart. We come to just say thank you, realize and understand that you are a great God, one whom set us up high and look down low. But my Father, we send up a special prayer to hope that you guide my good friend, Mr. Orchard Shepherd, on into heaven, because we know that heaven is where the place that all of us Christian wants to go, should go. And may he have a great homecoming for him. Just we pray in our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some move.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards, you moved, seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, we need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss pending and potential litigation.
Thank you. Could we have...
Does the motion move into executive session?
Okay, did you get that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, all in favor of the motion to enter into executive session?
Oh, that's right, all in. They did. You made a motion.
Now we need to vote.
Now we need to vote, all in favor. Discussion?
We are now in executive session.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, we have two quick actions to take to close out our called meeting, and Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll just walk the board through. The first thing we need is a motion to reconvene into regular session.
Okay. All in favor?
And the last thing we need is a motion to adjourn the 6:00 PM called meeting.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the April 2nd, 2025... Excuse me. April 1st. Sorry, got the wrong thing. I'd like to call the April 1st, 2025, regular meeting of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to ask Commissioner Mason if you would have our invocation, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll allow everyone to enter and sit down before we actually do our invocation. If we can all take this moment to bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place of business one more time. We thank you for all that you've done for this community and all that you're about to do. God, we ask that as we move forward in doing the business of Newton County, God, that you would give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding to make the right decisions to really help enhance this community. We thank you for every board member. We thank you for every resident that is here under the sound of my voice. God, I ask that you continue to bless this community, continue to allow it to propel and to be all that you've called it to be. We thank you. We give you all the kingdom honor and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson, would you lead us in the pledge?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our thought for the day is "Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success." Henry Ford. I'll ask now for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passed.
Madam Chair, at this time, we do have the section for citizen comments. At this time, this is for citizens to make comments for agenda topics only. Each individual will have three minutes to make their remarks. Again, this is for the agenda topics only during citizen comments.
Would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Dave Norton, 4357 Highway 142, Newborn. I am speaking tonight on item number seven under zoning. It's to rezone approximately, I believe it's 175 acres total, rezoning to industrial. This is just one of several things that are becoming before this board to zone industrial. There are quite a few people that want to turn us into an industrial area. If you've ever been to Fulton Industrial Boulevard, that's an industrial area of Atlanta. If you've been to other cities and you see the industrial areas of those cities, you see what's there. Is that what we want to become? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to make any comments? Okay. If you'd just state your name and address, please, for the record.
James Peterson, 70 Crooked Creek Way, Covington, Georgia, District Number Two. I noticed on 9C, there is only one appointment to the Solid Waste Committee, but we have two vacancies on that firm, Lindsey and then the chairman's. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
My name is John Clemmons, 152 Deep Step Road, Covington, Georgia. I spoke at the Planning Commission last week, I believe it was, and I'm also talking or speaking about the warehouse situation out there on near Almond Road. I voiced my concern last week about the fact that not only are we wanting to put three more huge warehouses, which I don't understand why we need anymore, we have empty ones everywhere, but I, like David said, I feel like we are turning Newton County into, I don't know if we've got a target on our back or what, but we are slowly but surely becoming very, very industrialized, and I don't like that. But one thing about where those warehouses are going, from what I understood last week, part of it's going to be on a wet weather creek, and then you are very, very close to the Yellow River, and the overall effect that that's going to happen or have on that whole situation, I think, is detrimental to that area, not to even speak of the in and out and all of the traffic and all of that's going to come into there. And I think it behooves this board to look at what is trying to be brought into this county at this time. I know we're close to Atlanta, but I think we need to really take a hard look at what we're wanting to do here and see if it's really in the best interest of those that are, have been here for some time and those that are here now. So, this is my opinion that I'm against that part, that one thing that you all are going to look at tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard?
Yes, I'm glad to get to talk up here. My name's Jackie Howard. I live at 250 Old Lockwood Road. Where they're proposing to build these warehouses is a dead end street. Dead end's on Interstate 20. It's all residential up and down through there. It's a little narrow two-lane road, and Old Lockwood Road would have to be the main intersection for everybody to go in and out. They've got traffic problems there now. There's wrecks all the time where Old Lockwood goes out onto the access road. They're in Almond now trying to build bridges and fix it over there to alleviate the traffic. If they put these warehouses in there, there's going to be more traffic, more wrecks, and people are going to get killed going up and down the Old Land Highway. They use it now for a racetrack coming up and down through there. The county can't maintain the road because the state's owned it. It's the Old Land Highway, it's 212. It used to be the main intersection coming through from Atlanta to Covington before the interstate come through. They dead-ended it up there below me where it goes out into Almond. It goes on through, and you've got two or three industrial parks down there now right off the Old Land Highway, and there's dump truck traffic coming out of there. We've got tractors and trailers now that goes in the lower end. They build these warehouses over there like they want to, putting them in there like they want to. There's nothing going to be but tractor and trailer up through there. That road and the county cannot handle it up there. Thank you.
Is anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, the time for public comments is closed.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is the chairman's report, and this evening, we're going to have a presentation from Ms. Charlene Scott and Tina Douglas with Newton County 4H, the Youth Department District Project Achievement Recognition.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. I'm Charlene Scott, and I serve as the Newton County 4H agent. I'm excited to be here with you tonight to talk about one of the most exciting, challenging, and rewarding programs offered in Georgia 4H, which is project achievement. This program is a key part of youth development in Georgia 4H, giving students from grades four through 12 a chance to explore interests, develop important life skills, and gain confidence through public speaking and project presentations. Tonight, we are here to celebrate the young people in our community that have represented Newton County at a district-level public speaking competition. But before we move into the youth recognition, I would like to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you to the Newton County Board of Commissioners and the Newton County community for their unwavering support and dedication to the 4H program. Your support helps prepare our youth to become beyond ready for their future. Youth participate in project achievement based on their grade level. We will start tonight by recognizing the fourth through sixth grade group. On February 8th, Newton County 4H hosted a district-wide public speaking competition for fourth through sixth graders at the Newton County STEAM Academy. The event saw 284 competitors from 14 counties. Newton County had 32 participants in various categories. For these young students, the focus is on hands-on learning, building self-confidence, and sharing knowledge. They present their projects in their classroom, advance to the county-level competition, and eventually move on to the district-level competition. Newton County 4Hers earned many awards, with 59% of them placing in the top three of their categories, and we also received an outstanding participation award for a 52% increase of participation over last year. Presentations this year, youth get to choose their own presentation topic, so they get to talk about whatever they want to talk about. So, there was a wide variety of topics. So, they ranged anywhere from dissident dehumidifiers, I had to Google that to help that student, to the history of Mansfield, dairy cows, and even some on Spirograph art. So, as I call their names, we're going to start with the fourth through sixth grade group. They will advance forward to receive their certificate and pen, and then get to shake some hands. The first one is Mason Anderson. Callie Carpenter. Alexis Davis. Audrey Fullerton. Mason Gregory. Dara Hart. Jaden Lewis. Evan Mitchell. Aaliyah Rideout. Tegan Stone. Dejean Turner. Adeline Westcott. And Cameron Wicker.
We certainly want to congratulate everyone and ask if it would be okay if the commissioners had their picture taken.
Yes, so we're going to call up, we're going to read a little thing about the seventh through twelfth graders, bring them up, give them their certificates, and then we'll have y'all come up and take a picture and shake hands and all of the things. I wasn't quite sure how we were going to make this work, but we're, learn as we go. It's the 4H motto, learn by doing. It's great. So, this is our fourth through sixth grade group. Of course, not all of them could be here with us tonight. It is a school night, but we are excited for the ones that are here. So, the next group that we are going to recognize is our seventh through twelfth grade group. So, if we want to clap for our fourth through sixth graders, absolutely. I tell people there's two types of public speakers in the world, those that are nervous and those that are lying. So, these kids are doing great. So, the weekend of February 28th, we had 483 youth from across 39 counties that make up Northwest District, travel to Rock Eagle 4H Center for the junior-senior district-level competition. Maybe they missed the memo. I don't know. It's okay. We're going to keep going. So, Newton County was represented by 16 middle school and high schoolers, and the cool thing about this is this is not for a grade. So, these kids actually choose to do this and get up and put in the work. So, these youth prepared for months. This is a two-part contest that began last fall while participants worked to submit a portfolio, which is a resume-like document that tells the story of the 4Hers' achievement and growth, characterized by their strong vision of content, skill, and learning. After submitting the portfolio in January, the youth created their eight-to-10-minute demonstrations. This year, Newton County youth prepared speeches, dances, vocal ensembles, original monologues, and even participated in a cooking lab demonstration. Throughout the weekend, participants competed, practiced citizenship by electing their peers to represent Northwest District 4H, participated in community service, and even learned a few new line dances. On Sunday morning, 14 of our youth returned home with medals, placing in the top three of their category. So, as I call their names, if they will advance forward to receive their certificates and pens. The first one is Andrew Brambilla. Izzy Braswell. Rosalyn de la Garza. Kylie Douglas. Brielle Felix. Osman Nava. Gracie Shacklock. Alexis Wandel. And Talon Wood. As a 4H staff and volunteers, we are incredibly proud of these 4Hers that stepped outside of their comfort zone and showed the world that they are our 4Hers. So, of course, they are not afraid of public speaking, which is what their shirts say on the back. So, we'll get a picture of them, and then y'all can come up and shake hands and congratulate.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is the report from the interim county manager. Being mindful of the time, we have about nine minutes before our public hearing.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I would like to invite Molly Melvin with Community Partners to reintroduce themselves to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We are Newton Community Partnership. Some of you may have known us as Newton County Family Connection, or before that, Newton County Partnership. We're always the same organization, doing the same work on behalf of all Newton County residents. We are a 501(c)(3). We operate independently, but on behalf as advocates of the community here. We are able, as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, to be the fiscal agent for both juvenile court and superior court operations, and we also sit on advisory committees ranging from Georgia Piedmont Technical College, Newton County Schools, CTAE, excuse me, the Archway Partnership, and other organizations that reach out to us looking for that community relationship. We are facilitators. We are connectors, and my name is Molly Melvin. I am only the third executive director of our organization. It's our longevity in this community and our depth of connections that makes the difference for the families here. I have offered you a brief timeline of many of the activities we've done. We've birthed nonprofits. We have reabsorbed nonprofits, and we are currently operating predominantly under a federal CDC grant for drug-free communities, but in a public health model, which allows us to not just say no to drugs, but to build protective factors and reduce those risk factors that puts our children in harm's way. I do want to introduce you to Noel West. She is our program director. She's only been with us a couple of years, but she already knows the ropes. I invite any questions you may have. Some of you may not know me, some of you may. Most of you probably know my predecessor, Laura Bertram. She retired in July, and that's the time that we changed the name of our organization back to what it was before.
Does anyone have any questions, quick questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Ms. Molly, I did want to make note that you did provide the folders in the green for them as a point of reference. So, this is a gift for the Commissioners to review the information.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
The next item we have on the agenda is unfinished business, but tonight, we have none to consider. We can move to number nine, the consent agenda.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Some move. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Motion's approved. Would you call the next item, please?
Yes, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is item number 10, being presented by Mr. Maynard Carratt, Newton County Animal Services. He'd like to do a memorandum of understanding regarding Newton County Animal Services. They're requesting approval to enter into a MOU with the Humane Society of Northeast Georgia, DBA Better Together Georgia and Animal Services, and there is no cost. Mr. Maynard?
Hi, how are y'all doing?
Good. Good.
We propose the Northeast Georgia Humane Society to help us with the, a lot of help at the shelter. They propose to fund a lot of benefits for us. I can let her speak exactly what she's offering.
Essentially, we have a grant that we have been allotted to help Georgia shelters create more positive outcomes for the dogs and cats in their care, and we have approximately up to $96,000 to allot towards Newton County Animal Services that we would use to create better opportunities for animals to get adopted, to not even come into the shelter through intake diversion, hire numbers of spay-neuter so that they can... hire numbers of spay neuter so that they can leave faster to create lower length of stay, and a lot of other training opportunities for staff and animals in order to just create more positive outcomes for companion animals in this county.
And that's no cost to Newton County at all?
Correct. And we do all the grant reporting up because it's our grant that we got, so you don't have to worry about that part either.
Okay. Are there any questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, thank you. A question that I have is, is it, will it affect the pickup of animals? Because some of my constituents have called me at home and said, "Well, there's some stray cats or something." And they called over to the shelter and they tell me that, um, they said they don't have no traps, something like that, so would that affect that animal pickup?
Do we pick up cats, so you?
Uh, you was asking about stray cats.
It's a lot of them in Covetown. And they're just stray cats and we can't seem to get nobody to put out a, um, something to catch them, traps to catch them, and they're just multiplying.
We do provide traps for the public.
So, do you, do you provide them any time they may or?
I can't, I can't hear him.
Yes, sir.
They can come up to the shelter and request a trap. We will assign cat traps out to the public.
So, so I will have to request a trap, get the trap, catch the cat, or maybe the dog, and bring them back to the shelter?
I still can't.
For, for cats, there are, there are some provisions in this MOU specifically to target trap neuter release or community cat programs. And we can, I can speak for hours on that subject. But in terms of traps, if there aren't enough for the community, and if it's part of a live release program, then we can fund additional traps through this grant.
Yes, ma'am. But let me get it clear, because I want to tell my constituents that if they have some stray cats, they come up to the shelter, pick up a trap, get the trap, catch the animal, then bring them back to the shelter.
The public, yeah, the public does. We, we release the traps to the public. They sign them out, catch the cat and bring them to us, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Humane Society of Northeast Georgia doing business as Better Together Georgia and Animal Services as allied agencies.
Okay. Are any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It is now seven-thirty, and we will begin our public zoning hearings. Ms. Shayna Appleweight from Planning and Zoning, the director, will bring forth these cases.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the Board of Commissioners. Can you activate the screen, Brian? It's on. Thank you. Our first petition this evening is a rezoning, REZ-24-0000011. There is a companion case to it, CUP-24-0000013. It is located at 12862 Brown Bridge Road and Brown Bridge Road. We're looking at two parcels, and their acreages respectively are 2.3 and 1.044 acres. The tax ID numbers are 0013086 and 0013085F. The future land use is a development node. The existing zoning is R2, single-family residential and neighborhood commercial, and they're in the Salem Tier Three overlay, which is a town center overlay. The proposed zoning is general commercial. It's in the Yellow River watershed. Character areas are live-work corridors and established suburban core. This is in District Two. Current owner is Camp Services, Inc., and B&amp;W Builders, LLC. And our petitioner is Charles Williams. Just a brief history, on January 2nd, 25, the planning commission, they tabled this petition for sixty days so that more information could be gathered, and specifically to have a community meeting. The community meeting was held on March 6th, and the applicant explained to the citizens that the project was going to be an Aldi grocery store and expressed their intent to provide quality goods, services, and jobs to the community. The citizens had concerns about potential traffic that would be in the area. And the developer responded that they have taken measures recommended by the transportation department to address those. For instance, there will be a right-in, right-out only lane, and they will also utilize the existing entrance at the traffic light. And on February 25th, the planning commission recommended approval for this rezoning by a vote of five-zero. And again, the applicant's intent is to rezone the two parcels, R2 and CN, to general commercial in order to establish a twenty-thousand-square-foot grocery retail establishment for an Aldi store. At the subject site, we went through the acreage already. It is located on Brown Bridge Road, adjacent to the Goodyear Auto Repair. And it's also in the Salem Overlay Tier Three with a future land use map of development node. And the current, the properties are currently undeveloped. In the character areas, per our 2023 comprehensive plan, the live-work corridor shows that the development node is an appropriate land use, and that general commercial, which they are requesting, is an appropriate zoning for this. The established suburban core shows the same thing. Have the development node as appropriate land use, and an appropriate zoning will be general commercial. In a brief site plan analysis, again, it's going to be a twenty-thousand-square-foot grocery store. So the proposed extension of the existing private drive, and we'll go through the aerial in a second, they're going to use that for one of the entrances. There's a light there where the Walmart is that extends into the section where the Goodyear and the Taco Bell. They're going to extend that to access the grocery from that end. And then they're also going to have the right-in, right-out on Salem Road itself. So given the existing zoning and development in the area, the proposed zoning may be appropriate for this area. And in conclusion, the proposed commercial use, it is consistent with the policies and intent of the Salem Overlay and with approved zonings in the area. Given the land use and zoning designations of the surrounding properties and meeting the intent of Section 460-020 of the Salem Overlay, there is justification for approval. Recommended conditions: Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved general commercial, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards: A, provide satisfactory ingress and egress to be approved by the county transportation engineer. B, to the extent possible, provide interparcial connectivity with adjoining properties. And any relief from the interparcial connectivity must be submitted to Development Services in writing for consideration. C, overnight parking of commercial vehicles on the lot is prohibited. D, there shall be a right-in, right-out entrance only onto Brown Bridge Road. E, all roofs should be neutral in color and must blend with other roofs in the area, subject to the approval of Development Services. And F, we do have some exterior stipulations per our overlays. So includes be primarily brick with tile, stone with weathered, polished, or fluted face, textured cement stucco, architectural concrete masonry with fluted, split face or broken face finish, Portland cement plaster and lath systems, architectural either precast or tilted-up concrete, either fluted or with exposed aggregate finish or fiber cement board. Brick shall substantially match the colors of those used by Publix and Walmart at the intersection of Brown Bridge Road and Salem Road, subject to the approval of the Director of Development Services. G, submit appropriate plans and plaits, including a stormwater plan, to be reviewed and approved by Development Services, Public Works, Newton County Fire Services, Newton County Water and Sew Authority, and Georgia's Southern Water Commission, if applicable. So these are our parcels here. We have our Walmart over here and Zaxby's. This is a Goodyear Taco Bell, so they're going to have a right-in, right-out lane on Brown Bridge Road here. So there's no left-turn lane going across Brown Bridge Road. And then they can also access it this way, where they're going to have their entrance here. And we'll have a side plan shortly. Current zonings, we have the residential zoning and our neighborhood commercial zoning, and they're requesting to rezone all of that to general commercial, which will be the same as the Walmarts to the south. Salem Overlay, Tier Three. This is a development node, future land use map, Yellow River watershed, Commissioner District Two. These are the character areas. It's mostly in the live-work and a small sliver in the established suburban. This is a survey that was submitted, so that you see briefly here, this is what they're going to extend the driveway. And we actually have the side plan here showing it here. So they're going to access it here from this internal drive, which connects all the other establishments. And then they're going to have a right-in, right-out entrance off of Brown Bridge Road as well. So this is the proposed Aldi store and a proposed layout. And of course, we have our, you know, Zaxby's, Walmart, Taco Bell, Chick-fil-A, Goodyear neighboring. If there are any questions for our staff? If not, Madam Chair, this is a public hearing.
We'll now open the public meeting. Are those in favor of the request or invited to come and address the board? There'll be a total of ten minutes for those speaking in favor. Do we have anyone coming to speak in favor?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have one question for the planning and zoning. Sorry, I didn't have my hand up far enough for you. Just a real question. I know this is in the Salem Tier District. What landscaping do you have in that? I don't see anything in this proposal about landscaping. I don't see anything on their site plan about landscaping. You know, a lot of these overlays were to, so we could, you know, kind of shield the businesses like a lot of great towns do, and not have everything just like building, building, building. We should have landscaping. And what is that enforcement on that landscaping going forward?
Yes, this is, you're correct, Commissioner, this is just a concept plan. So it's a general plan. So a lot of the details are not here, but when they submit their land disturbance permit, they have to submit a landscaping plan as well, which will be reviewed by the department in accordance with the requirements of the Salem Overlay.
Good evening. John Queen, and I am the applicant with Mr. Charles Williams for the redevelopment of 12862 Brown Bridge Road for the proposed store of an Aldi grocery store. So we're looking to build an Aldi's grocery store to help provide more valuable food options in the area, as well as help drive down prices as well. The more competition you have, a lot of times, cheaper prices for goods and services. Additionally, we're looking to help provide jobs and support the economy as well by bringing in this new grocery store. We've been very thoughtful with this design and taking in consideration from the community. We host the town hall meeting for District Two with Commissioner Mason as well. And so it was really good. We received some valuable feedback, a lot of questions regarding traffic on Brown Bridge Road. And so we took that feedback and went back to the drawing board and came up with a new site plan. And what we did was we decided to make that driveway entrance a right turn, right in, right out. And that's for multiple reasons. One, it keeps traffic flowing, and you don't have to stop if someone is trying to make a left turn, which is also very dangerous. What we also did was made sure that we had a driveway in that rear that brought you to a syndicated light, a street light, where if you need to make a left turn or make a right turn, you're protected by a signal light. You're not crossing over traffic. Throughout this process, we also learned that Brown Bridge Road is going through an expansion, some infrastructure upgrades as well of expanding the road, which all supports this grocery store coming in the area as well. And so we're looking to build this Aldi's. Like I said, we've been very thoughtful with placement and following all of the guidelines by the planning and building departments. And we're looking forward to bringing this new grocery store to the area. And then I am more than happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you. I commend you for doing the town hall and getting with Commissioner Mason and working on this plan and changing the entrances and exits. And I wish more developers would come here with an open mind and try to do what's best for our community. So I just wanted to say that out loud, that I commend you for doing that with us.
Thank you. We care about the community and bingo, positive support of the community as well.
Did you have a question? Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, we'll close that portion. That portion is now closed. So we'll now hear from those opposed to the request. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to that? Okay. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Queen, thank Mr. Williams, thank you for the town hall. We had several District Two residents to come out right here in this particular location. District Two residents were able to ask their questions, get them resolved. And it sounds like to me, from the feedback that I received, that they are very ecstatic about bringing this particular retail development to the current retail development already in this particular area. So with that being said, I move that we approve REZ-24-000011 with recommended staff conditions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next petition this evening is the companion case to this one. It is a conditional use permit. And because it's in the Salem Overlay, this is a requirement. It is CUP-24-000013. And again, it's companion case to the rezoning we just heard, REZ-24-000011. And again, the proposed use is a twenty-thousand-square-foot grocery retail establishment for Aldi, located at 12862 Brown Bridge Road and Brown Bridge Road. Acreages 2.3 and 1.044 respectively. Map and parcel 0013086 and 0013085F. The future land use map is a development node. Current zoning, well, the zoning just changed. So we're now at general commercial, per the decision just made. But, and of course, that's what they were proposing to do. Watershed is Yellow River, and the character areas are the live-work corridor and the established suburban corridor. This is in Commissioner District Two, and our owner is Camp Services, Inc., and B&amp;W Builders, LLC, and our petitioner is Charles Williams. And I won't go through, most of the information is identical to the rezoning that we just did. We have the same history. The planning commission approved it on 3/25. They recommended approval for this cup by a vote of five-zero. We have the applicant's intent, of course, is to establish the grocery store. And per the site plan analysis, they will have to follow all the requirements for fencing and signage and, you know, architectural design as well for the Salem Overlay. And in conclusion, the proposed grocery store for Aldi is compatible with the Salem Overlay tier and zoning, as well as with similar uses in the surrounding area. The access points will be internal, and there will also be a right-in, right-out entrance on the Brown Bridge Road, which will help to reduce any traffic buildup on that road. Staff recommends that, should the Board of Commissioners approve the conditional use permit request to operate a twenty-thousand-square-foot grocery retail establishment, that it be with the following staff recommended conditions. And so for the conditions, should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit for a twenty-thousand-square-foot grocery retail establishment for Aldi, conditional and subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And one, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards: A, limit the number of total occupants per suite that set by the fire marshal for that building. B, provide a sprinkler inspection to the Newton County Fire Marshal. Inspection must be- Inspection must be approved prior to the release of a business license. C, prior to the release of the business license, provide a copy of an approved fire inspection from Newton County Fire Marshal to Development Services, and complete an annual fire inspection from Newton County Fire Services. D, prior to any construction, addition, or removal, or completion of the building, the applicant must apply for all required permits. E, obtain environmental health approval before the issuance of the business license as applicable. And F, there shall be a right-in, right-out entrance only onto Brown Bridge Road. And we have our aerial again. These are the two parcels that we're looking at today. We've got the Goodyear, Taco Bell, sorry, Walmart, and Zaxby's. Currently zoned, general commercial. Salem overlay tier three. The flume or future land use map is a development node. It's in the Yellow River watershed, Commissioner District Two. Livework character area and established suburban core character areas for our comprehensive plan. And we have our survey again, and of course, our site plan, which is going to show proposed layouts. And if there are any questions, Madam Chair, this is also a public hearing.
Thank you. We'll now open the public meeting. All those in favor of the request are invited to come and address the board. You'll have a total of 10 minutes to speak. If you'd state your name and address again for us.
Good evening, John Queen, 12862 Brown Bridge Road. I would like to actually hold my time to answer any questions that anyone may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Well, this portion of the public hearing is now closed. We'll hear from those opposed to the request. Is anyone opposed to the request? Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve CUP 24-000013 with recommended conditions.
There a second?
No second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next petition this evening is also a conditional use permit. It is CUP 24-000014. This is for a proposed special events facility located at 13793 Highway 36, currently on 36.05 acres. Tax ID 0069029. The future land use is rural residential. The existing zoning, it is a dual-zoned property, A agricultural and agricultural residential. This is in the Alcove River watershed. The current character area is low-density rural residential. This is located in Commissioner District One, and our current owner is Ronnie D. Anatowsky Rochelle. And our petitioner today is Ronnie Rochelle. There's a brief history. On January 2nd, the planning commission tabled this petition for 60 days so more information could be gathered, and this was done by a vote of 4-0. And on 3/25, the planning commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit by a vote of 5-0. And I do want to add here, all objections were heard that day, and your packet also includes an additional letters we received. And many of these objections were brought up on the day of the planning commission meeting. So it will be the last page on there, I'm just... I'm so sorry, let me just make this. All right, one of the emails, just to give you an idea, some of the concerns that were raised at the meeting, you know, were the day and time of the event, frequency, any noise that could be generated, if there was any alcohol that was going to be served. And applicants indicated that they will not be having alcohol on the property. Another concern was also the crowd size, and of course, security on the premises during the event. Applicants stated that they had met with all neighbors there, but we have one neighbor said that they did not have that opportunity. And I think the last concern from this letter, we have if they're going to be present for all events, and yeah, how often they're going to be present on the property. So many of these concerns were raised at the planning commission meeting as well and heard by that board. And just to continue, so the applicant's intent, again, is to operate a special events facility on the property. And for our site plan, we're on 36.05 acres, dual zone, A and AR, with a rural residential flume. Currently, the property has an existing house, barn, sheds, and farmland, and the surrounding area includes residential homes. So based on the site plan submitted by the applicant to our department, staff would offer the following recommendations. So the site plan in the letter of intent indicated the property will be used as a special event facility and will be located 700 feet approximately off of Highway 36 on the 36 acres. The site plan clearly indicates the location of the parking area and the various auto facilities. And as stated before, we have a farmhouse, there's a farm barn, there are three silos, there's a tin roof greenhouse, secondary barn, and a pole barn that's currently on the property. And we do have pictures of some of those. The applicable section would be Section 510-595, which covers special events facilities. I won't read through, this is included in your packets, but I will answer any questions that you have on this section. And in conclusion, the proposed special events facility is located on a Georgia State Route, allowing for easy access to the property. The property is large enough to accommodate ingress and egress on the existing driveway. There is adequate area for parking and outdoor activities related to the events. So the farmhouse is approximately 1,299 square feet, and the farm barn is about 3,200 square feet. Both buildings will be used for the special events facility. And the proposed private gatherings include events such as family reunions. And one of the updates that we had brought to the planning commission for their second meeting is that they were proposing that the 700 square foot greenhouse, as well as the 2,600 square foot barn, will also be used for educational programs, agritourism events, and farm-to-table experiences. And they intend to add vegetable and flower gardens, as well as a hay field. So if this use meets the standards set forth in Section 510-595 for a special events facility, it should be approved. Recommended conditions. Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit for a special events facility conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, bring any unpermitted buildings that will be used for the special events facility into compliance by obtaining building permits, and as for any improvements that they would need to do to some of the buildings. B, limit the number of total occupants per suite of the occupancy load set by the Newton County Fire Marshal. C, provide a sprinkler inspection to the Newton County Fire Marshal, and the inspection must be approved prior to the release of a business license. D, prior to the release of the business license, they have to provide a copy of the fire inspection to Development Services and complete an annual inspection from Newton County Fire Services. E, prior to any construction, addition, or removal of walls, the applicant must apply for all required permits. F, obtain environmental health approval before the issuance of a business license. And then we have some additional conditions. G, all outside events will end at 11:00 PM. This does not include cleanup and takedown of the event. H, adequate parking shall be provided for guests in the area shown on the concept plan. Security personnel will be provided at each event in direct traffic while vehicles are entering and exiting the property during events. And I, any outside reception shall be held at least 150 feet off of any property boundaries. This is the parcel we're looking at, so we have Highway 36, and this is the 36-acre parcel, and these are the existing buildings that they have currently. And the house that was recently permitted and built is located right about here. These are zonings, it is dual zone, A and AR, the dark green is the A zoning, light green agricultural residential. The flume is rural residential. Watershed is Alcove River. This is located in Commissioner District One. Character area is low-density rural residential. And this is a survey of the parcel, and you see they're showing some of the buildings here. It isn't a regularly shaped lot. This is a concept plan that was submitted by the applicant, and they have the key just at the top of the legend. So these are the farm, this is the parking area that they're looking at here. We have our vegetable gardens. These are the existing buildings, and they've labeled each of them, you may be able to see it on your screens, but the number which building is which, of course, this is going to be left open for he, growing and reaping of he. These are current structures that are existing, so we have, this is the recently built farmhouse that was there. And these are the existing barns, we have the open area, you can see some of the silos And I think there's some fencing already on the property. These are the other barns that are there, so they will need to make improvements, and that's what they will need the permits for. This is a tin roof greenhouse, and we have the chapel and silos. And this is the other pole barn, and of course, the open area to the rear of the property. Oh, we've got more pictures. These are just more images of the property. And we've got our fencing here, silos, this is the old barn that they're going to convert. And of course, we've got more silo images here. And if there are any questions for staff? If not, Madam Chair, this is also a public hearing.
Commissioner Edwards?
Madam Chair, so, Ms. Appleweight, and you may have touched on it, and I may have missed it, so DOT, DOT had no concerns about a turn lane, a decelerate lane at this particular location?
That's something that we would address when they submit for their land disturbance permit, because right now they have an existing driveway, but that would be one of the approvals that will be required.
So a decelerate lane would be required if approved?
If that's what GDOT recommends. We haven't gotten any recommendations from them at this time.
That's all I have right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? We'll now open the public meeting. All those in favor of the request are invited to come and address the board. There'll be a total of 10 minutes for those speaking in favor. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Ronnie Anatowsky Rochelle, 13793 Highway 36, Covington, Georgia.
Thank you.
Okay, so, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We come to you on behalf of the request for the agritourism venue that my husband and I are planning to have. We believe that it will bring unique qualities to Newton County. Our vision is to create a space that will not only serve as a beautiful agritourism site, but also fosters community engagement through educational farm tours, hands-on agricultural experiences, and small events such as private family functions, retreats, and the like. We are committed to preserving the natural beauty of our land while offering a destination that benefits local businesses, provides family-friendly events, and promotes agricultural education. We have thoughtfully planned this venture to align with county regulations, ensure minimal impact on neighbors, and contribute positively to the local economy. We sincerely appreciate the county planning committee's initial approval and look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And to add to that, so I just want to address the distance this property is located. This property is 36.7 acres. And one of my commitments to the original owner, Mr. Billy, was when I purchased this property, I would keep it original. And we have, in the last three years, we purchased this property, and we have only did anything but enhance the property, remove all the trees, try to keep it as top-conditioned as we could. And then also, as you've seen on the picture, we added a farmhouse, okay, to this property. And so those are the only things that we have only did to this property. We intend to keep this property original, okay? We have told the first commission is to keep it as an agriculture residential, that's our plan, that's what we plan to do. And then the second thing is this, if you look at the distance from any neighbor, okay, the closest neighbor would be Ms. Molly, and she's about approximately 940 feet from that. The next one would be Douglas, he's approximately a little over 1,000 feet from any of the buildings. And Billy, the original owner, he's over 1,000 feet. So we way beyond the 700-feet barrier, okay? In addition to that, our recreation event, where we're going to have the event, is on the backside of the property, and it's approximately 1,500 feet from anybody. And there are wood barriers around, so we have really thought out to make sure we really thought of our neighbors and really consider our neighbors, and there won't be any issues.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor? This part of the public hearing is closed, and we'll now hear from those that are opposed to the request. Is there anyone opposed to the request? Could you state your name and address, please?
Beverly Douglas, and we're at 137...
We can't hear.
Beverly Douglas, I live at 13759, and you'll have to excuse me because I'm scared to death, public speaking. We have some concerns, even though it was mentioned that we're several feet away from there, there are no fences, there are no barriers. The fence that you saw in the pictures is only around the little farmhouse that's back there. There is no protection for us because our backyard face is right on the border with them. What's to say those guests come on our yard? Or there's, all of us are here, and we've had no meetings, nothing's been discussed with us, no anything. And I understand that it is his land, and he has a right to do that, but I don't want to constantly be an unwilling participant in their venture. The noise we hear, the music, what if they're out there fighting? What if they're unruly? What if they're drunk? There's no security that's going to be on their premises, so how are we, the seven of us, protected against their guests if they're not even going to be there to monitor them? And these are the things that we were really opposed to, and if we hadn't been talked to or reassured that they would be so many feet away from us or whatever. But I have grandkids that come there, my neighbor has grandkids, the next neighbor to that has a small child, the neighbor on the other side also has children too. None of this has been talked to us, we don't, I don't want them in my backyard, I don't want people wandering, there's no borders. You can step from their property right onto mine on three different areas. And what about alcohol? They said there's none, but if you're not going to be there monitoring, how do you know alcohol's not being brought onto that property? And we just have several concerns, weapons, fireworks, noise, how long? You say 11 o'clock that you're going to end it, how long do you clean up? All night? Some of the people, the neighbors that are here tonight work. Is this every night? Is this during the week, monthly? How long, how often are these events going to be? What about the noise, security? We have a lot of concerns. I don't know if I necessarily oppose it, but I do not want to be an unwilling participant in somebody else's venture. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition? Would you state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Molly Barrett. I live at one three eight one seven Highway thirty-six. I'm the neighbor of, uh, Mr. Rochelle. And my concern is that, um, we were never told about this, um, project that Mr. Rochelle is gonna be having. Um, I mean, the first time I saw him was about three, um, Martin Luther King holidays. Okay? And, um, like I said, he never told us that he was gonna be doing this. When I bought my property, I bought it because of, um, the neighborhood, because of the tranquility. I'm now retired, and I wanna have some peace and quiet where I live. I'm not a rich person that I can just pick up and go anywhere I want to go. And I don't wanna cause any trouble for Mr. Rochelle. But the first meeting that was held on January twenty-eighth, that was the first time I knew about this project that he's having. It was never discussed with us. I was blindsided regarding, you know, what they're trying to do here. My main concern, I'm there with my daughter. There is no fence nor anything. They just have those, um, what you call it, like farm fences. I mean, people are gonna drink, and they're gonna do whatever they do. And you cannot control everybody that is gonna be there. Okay? Um, I'm not sure if the Rochelles are gonna be there for every event that they're having. I'm not sure about that. And his driveway is right parallel to my property, it's on the side of my property. I'm concerned about security for me and my daughter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Robert Douglas, one three seven five nine Highway thirty-six. I just would like to add on to what my wife spoke about a few minutes ago. In regards to the garden, okay, that's fine, well and good. But is someone going to be there when these community people come to pick the vegetables? Are they gonna just have unlimited access to the property? Which, again, who's to control them from wandering onto someone else's property? They mentioned security. Well, security on the highway directing cars into the parking lot, to me, is not security for the events or the property. You can't use security out there on the highway, and you've got, who knows what's going on on the rear, side, or back of the property? We're concerned about that. As my wife mentioned, we have children, grandchildren, that are on the property on the weekends, holidays. So are we gonna be subjected to whoever is coming on that property? We have no assurance of that. And as the young lady just spoke, we retired also. Moved from Conyers to here, twenty-seven years in Conyers. Moved to Covington, because we wanted peace and quiet. We didn't wanna move into a subdivision. We saw this property, it was told to us that it was farm area, it was going to stay that way. And now we're hearing about these special events and, and, and conferences maybe, and meetings or whatever, whatever. So that's, I'm looking at an influx of people that we don't necessarily think are going to be uh, something that we want to be involved with on whatever basis, whether it be weekly, weekend, monthly, whatever. And to me, as neighbors and property owners surrounding that property, we should be taking into consideration what's going to happen to our lives. How's it going to affect us and our children? And that's one of the main concerns, is security. Amongst other things that we voice as concerns. Yes, it's his property, he can do what he wants to, I understand that. But you also have neighbors around you that live there also. And I might add, may sound kinda corny, but we were there first. Okay? And we all came there with reasons of relaxation, quiet, peaceful surroundings. We don't want maybe loud noise. Can you control that? No. Can you control what type of people are coming? No. You can say you can, but you can't. You have an event, you don't know who's gonna show up, you don't know what type of people are gonna show up. You don't know if, as my wife said, are they gonna come with alcohol? You can't serve it, fine, but it can be there. And everyone knows where you have alcohol, you can have a problem. You can have those that consume too much, and if that should happen, where could they end up? On our properties. Our children out playing. And then the issue of events ending at eleven o'clock, that's fine, well and good, but then the cleanup is, the time is unlimited. So if you've got an event ending at eleven, to us, it's not over. Because whoever you have there cleaning, they could be there twelve, one, two o'clock in the morning cleaning. We don't wanna hear any more traffic, we don't wanna hear any more noise, if there is any, while they're cleaning up. Then on top of that, so you've got the security out there on the highway directing traffic. So now you've got more traffic on Highway thirty-six around our homes that we don't wanna see or hear. You can't control that. You say you're gonna have a small crowd, you can't control that either. So you say twenty to twenty-five people, what are you gonna do if fifty show up? Turn them away? No, they're gonna come in. Now you've got fifty people maybe. Can that one security guy out there on the highway provide security for that whole thirty-six acres? We don't know where those people are gonna end up. Sure, you've got the nice fancy buildings, are they gonna stay in there? Can you guarantee that? No. I go back again, that's not what I signed up for when I bought the property, as well as my other neighbors. Just taking consideration what we're gonna have to deal with. I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition?
Hello. Adrian Bullock, one three seven three three Highway thirty-six. I'd just like to go on record that I agree with my neighbors, I echo their sentiments. There's no need for me to regurgitate everything that was already said. I just wanna go on record as opposing, for the same reasons.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition? The public hearing is now closed. Ms. Appleweight? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. But, that's fine, come on.
Angela Turlington, one three seven two five Highway thirty-six. So we're, we're, I'm sorry, Angela Turlington, one three seven two five Highway thirty-six. We're on the other side of, um, Ms. Adrian that just spoke. Again, don't wanna regurgitate or repeat what has already been spoken, but, um, the Rochelles do not live down here full-time. So if they are planning on having these events or community garden visitors, you know, there is the concern that there wouldn't be someone that would always be there if they had visitors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, the public hearing's now closed. Ms. Appleweight? Say your motion.
Madam Chair, uh, this, this is in District One. First, let me say that I appreciate everyone that came out to speak in favor and against. Uh, my concern is, in a, in a agricultural residential zoning, and we introduce conditional use permit, it essentially creates an island of commercial use. That was my, that was my initial concern, and then we have the, the, the traffic issue. And, uh, the, the residents in the surrounding area have brought up some, some, some good points. Um, I, I don't know, um, I was under the impression that the, the Rochelles will be living there. I did not know, uh, that was not gonna be the case. And the, 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 not only the weekend use, the special events facility would, you would think would be a weekend use, but the, the week, the, all during the week, it appears to me as well. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion to deny conditional use permit, zero, 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 one, four.
Say your second.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm gonna sustain from the vote. Uh, I was the agent, the real estate agent on that project that worked for Mr. Turlington, um, not, and, and, and know the buyer and the situation of the property.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor? To deny? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Our next petition this evening is a rezoning. It is R E Z twenty-four dash zero, 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 one, three. This is located at one five four nine eight and one five five two four Highway thirty-six. There are two parcels we're looking at, and their respective acreages are zero point nine seven and two point zero three acres. Tax ID numbers are zero, zero, seven, two, A, zero, two, seven, and zero, zero, seven, two, A, zero, two, eight, A. The future land use is mixed use. The existing zoning is agricultural, residential, and general commercial. And the proposed zoning for both parcels is highway commercial. This is located in the Yellow River and Alkovee watersheds. Character area is low-density rural residential. Located in Commissioner District One, current owner is William B. Jones. And our petitioner is Jeremy Crosby from JPC Design and Construction LLC. And it's a brief history, on two twenty-five of, of this year, the Planning Commission, at the request of the applicant, tabled this petition until the March Planning Commission meeting, so that the petitioner could add the second parcel to the petition and change his zoning request. And on March twenty-fifth, the Planning Commission recommended denial of this petition due to the applicant not being present. And this was my vote of five to zero. The applicant's intent was to rezon both properties from AR to CG and CG to TH in order to expand the existing pot store and to add an existing septic tank system with field lines to the adjacent property. And eventually, they will combine in both properties. And again, we're currently looking at two locations right now on Highway thirty-six, approximately point nine seven and two point zero three acres. And it's, the properties are dual-zoned at this time, and they're also surrounded by other commercial and residential zonings. The character area is low-density rural residential, and appropriate zoning is highway commercial, according to our comprehensive plan. Side plan analysis, based on the side plan submitted on December fourth, twenty twenty-four by the applicant, the Development Services, staff has the following considerations. So they're proposing to rezon the property to highway commercial in order to combine and expand the existing septic tank and the field, the drain field lines onto the adjacent property that's next to the current pot store. And we'll look at the area in a second on that. And they also plan to expand the building in the future. So given the existing zoning and development in the area, the proposed zoning may be appropriate for this area. And in conclusion, provided staff's recommended conditions are incorporated into the development of the site. The proposed rezoning to highway commercial is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and with approved zonings in the area. Recommended conditions. So should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved highway commercial. Conditional is subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to the following, submit a minor plat combining parcels zero, zero, seven, two, A, and zero, two, seven, and zero, zero, seven, two, A, zero, two, eight, A. B, prior to any new uses, all permits shall be obtained as applicable. They must obtain and maintain a business license as applicable. D, all activities for the retail establishment shall be carried on entirely within the enclosed building, except for an ice machine, which is allowed to be situated on the exterior front walk of the building. E, no outside storage allowed on the property, and no merchandise allowed to be displayed outside of the building except for the ice machine. F, appropriate architectural design finishes, as approved by staff, shall be included on the existing building and the new addition. And the trash receptacle shall be enclosed in wood or masonry. G, submit appropriate plans or plaques to be reviewed and approved by Development Services, Public Works, Environmental Health, Newton County Fire Services, Newton County Water and Sewer Authority, Georgia Stone and Water Commission, and GDOT as applicable. This is the location we're looking at, at the, we have the two highways, two twelve and thirty-six intersecting, and this is the roundabout. This is the existing pot store currently, which they will be looking to expand in the future. And then they're looking to expand the septic drain line and field onto this property. So the house will be demolished. So we have our current zoning, one parcel is general commercial, one parcel is agricultural residential. And they're looking to rezon everything to highway commercial per the comprehensive plan. Current future land use map is mixed use. The watershed is also, is a dual watershed property. Where this, where the building is, is actually in the Alkovee watershed. And you've got the Yellow River in the maroon. This is in Commissioner District One. Low-density rural residential is our character area. We have our surveys, this is the boundary survey. You have the two parcels, one here and one over here. Those, okay, so the last one, so this shows just the parcel on the left, so you see a little bit of the one on the right here. And then you have, this is the existing building with a pot store on this parcel. So these are just surveys of each parcel that they're showing right now. This is our concept plan. So we have the proposed extension, this light gray area here. This is the existing building, this is what they're proposing to extend. And of course, improvements in their parking. And then we have the, the adjacent parcel, where we're gonna have the drained field, um, the septic drain field, septic tank and everything that will extend onto that property to better accommodate the business. And if there are any questions for staff? If none, this is an open, this is a public hearing.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Appleweight, so the new building, um, what, can you, can you, with the pointer, show that, that's the new piece?
It'll be an addition.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a separate building, right near this area here.
All right, so-
This is the dumpster.
And, and that new buil, that's, that square footage is gonna, requires the additional drain field, septic drain field?
Yes. So that's why they're, they have to extend it.
Yeah. I, I talked to, uh, Mr. Crosby today about this, and I, and I was gonna, I wanted to ask you, so across the stipulation, so across the road, we approved at the last meeting, another venture, and we put the stipulations on there that, and even in a, a new build-out or an enlargement of the building, there could be, I assume, I've seen Mr. Jones establishment, so I assume this wouldn't be the case. But can we stipulate there will be no vape shops? No tattoo parlors? I don't think that would be very, that was, that would, uh, be what Mr. Jones would do, but, um, but I, I just wanna have that stipulated. Mr. Jones could sell the property at some point, and this, this flume is mixed use. But I wanna have those stipulations added, if we could, if, if, if we decide to approve this.
So just to be clear, no vape shops and massage parlors?
And, it, correct me, is that, it, was that, was that all that was stipulated on the property across the street?
I do believe there was a third use, I can't recall it right now, but I'll be happy to include that.
Okay, please. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, sorry, Commissioner Long?
Thank you. That was good, Commissioner Edwards. If they're gonna be expanding the store, then they are gonna have an anchor probably, more than likely, when they add on to it. Typically, you see that with the gas stations, there is an anchor there. So adding the stipulations that we normally add would be important there, to add those. My other question would be, is, um, if they are, the back piece of property that we are making commercial, and they're gonna put field, uh, septic drain lines, are we gonna put any restriction on that back property about what can be built back there? Or they're gonna have to come back for a new permit? I don't wanna leave that open-ended, that something could be built on the back of that property now that we're changing it to commercial without them coming before the board again for, uh, something, because now we're making it one parcel.
Yes, it's gonna be made one parcel. Um, generally, when we have the septic drain field here, they won't be able to build over that.
But look at the, look at the picture, look at the picture of the drain field lines. It leaves plenty of room on that property where that house is sitting. Is the house gonna be torn down? Is the house gonna be used for something else? You know, it could be rented out as a commercial space.
No, the house is gonna be- No, the house is going to be demolished, and they would also have to leave space for a future drain field if they have to expand that as well. So, um, it'll be one great commercial parcel at this point. Yes.
I just want to make sure that we're closing all those loopholes and loose ends.
Okay. We'll now open the, uh, public meeting. All those in favor of the request are invited to come address the board. Be a total of ta, um, 10 minutes for those speaking in favor. Would you just, um, give us your name and address, please?
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Mike Horn. Uh, Mr. Crosby couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here for him. I'm with JPC Design and Construction and Jones Petroleum. And so I'm here on behalf of Mr. Jones and, and, and the company. Kind of want to clear up a few things. Um, brief history on, really while we're here, um, about a year and a half ago, well, we purchased the property a little over two years ago, the pot store. And we also purchased the residential home behind it. And about, uh, about a year and a half ago, we were having septic tank problems at the store. And, um, we had to get a soil scientist out and basically design a whole new system. The system there failed. And, um, the design of the new system, i- it was a larger system to handle, obviously to handle a future expansion, uh, and/or, uh, you know, new development on the property. So it was a larger system. There was nowhere on the commercial property to put the drain field lines. So that easement that's shown up there, um, we actually installed this new tank, and there, there are drain field lines that go across the residential property, and there are drain fields on the residential property. So we came to the planning department, um, with this concept plan where, uh, we've kind of been toying with either adding on additional square footage on the end of the building or possibly even, uh, demoing the store and building a new store directly behind the store. But we, we fell with this particular plan here, and the plan is, is to remodel the store, add square footage to the store, and add new restrooms, and, um, not do anything else with the store, just upgrade the store. So that's kind of a little history of how we got to this point. Um, we came to the county, uh, because the utility, the septic tank, well, let me back up a little bit. We went to Newton County Environmental Health, and they issued the permit to put the septic tank and the field lines on the residential property. We, uh, gave cross easements for the drain fields to be there. And, uh, we agreed to come back and to, um, do a combination plat to, um, combine the lot so that we'd have a conforming lot. Well, we went to the planning staff. The properties are two different zonings, so we had another hurdle to cross where we are now here applying for zoning to zone the two properties the same zoning. And then, uh, we, our intent is to come back and do a combination plat and plat everything together. And the residential home would no longer be a residential home. Currently, we own the home, and an employee that works at the store lives in the home. So, what, you know, once this zoning is done, obviously, that'll go away. So, um, that's basically our intent, is, uh, basically just to clean up the site, combine the lots, um, bring the lot, bring the whole thing into conformance with the CH zoning that meets the land use plan, um, for that area. And, uh, you know, just to, and then to come in and apply for permits and do a remodel, do some new restrooms, add up a few parking spots, and, and then, you know, that, that's our intent right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Well, this portion of the, the, uh, public hearing is now closed. We'll hear from those, um, opposed to this request. There'll be a total of 10 minutes for those speaking, um, in opposition, and if you would just, uh, state your name and address, please.
Sure. Maya Allen, District 3 resident. And this too is on Highway 36, so I was really just looking for clarification. I'm not really opposed or for it. But if the, the citizens that have left already have the same concerns about, um, agriculture and a wedding chapel, um, and we're not knowing what this commercial is going to be, and they're removing residential, I would think that the same concerns would be there. But really, while I, why I got up is because at the bottom, it says that the Planning Commission recommended denial due to application being absent. So I would like to understand how that happened, when the application went in, and was that before or after the moratorium? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? That part of the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Um, yes, I, I want to clarify one thing first, that the young lady that just spoke, that that the, um, it was not an application that was absent at the zoning and, uh, Planning and Zoning Board, it was, the applicant was not there, and he explained to me today why that was. But, um, with that, I would like to make a motion to recommend rezoning request REZ 24-000013 with staff recommendations and the recommendations we spoke of earlier. Ms. Appleweight?
Uh, Commissioner, would that, would that be recommending approval?
Uh, most for approval.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Henderson? Any discussion? Commissioner Long?
Commissioner Edwards, do you, do we want to add anything about the, the back parcel being opened? Like, if they're going to, I mean, if they're going to add on the store, I think they've got that on here about adding on to the store and what, what uses it will be. But the back lot, I guess if they take the building down and move the building back, it'll be a whole, a whole new thing, but they wouldn't have to come back before this board for anything.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Ms., Ms. Appleweight, is it okay to ask her a question? Ms. Appleweight, so, if, if, uh, if the applicant wanted to co, wanted to, uh, add on another building or even increase their square footage, would they have to come back before this board again?
Not at this time. No, they wouldn't have to, because it'll be a commercial property. They will then apply for their building permit unless there's a specific condition added here that, you know, no other buildings can go there. Um, but my understanding is that the majority of that second parcel will be reserved for the septic drain field and all the drain lines. So they won't be able to build over that.
And, and those drain fields already exist, correct?
If they're not in a Z, they will be added. I think he said they have the easement in. So they would have to submit a land disturbance permit to us, and then they'll show us all of those details. They also have to submit to the environmental health for approval. And that will come in when they're doing that, and also whenever they're doing their expansions, um, of the current building of, yeah.
So I guess my question for legal would, would be to, to, to remedy, to remedy additional buildings or to have them come back before the board for additional buildings, how would we, how would that motion be worded?
You could, you could add a condition that says, "No improvements other than those shown on the civil site improvements plan submitted with the application shall be permit, permitted without approval of the Board of Commissioners."
So stated, so, I'd like to, I'd like to rephrase my motion, Madam Chair, if I could. So I would like to make a motion that includes the verbiage from, from council and the verbiage that Ms. Appleweight now discussed or are mentioned or asked for earlier. Um, I don't know how we're going to state that in the form of a motion, but that's it.
I think you did that. You are amending your prior motion in that manner.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Oh. Any discussion? Did we have any discussion before that? No? Okay. All in favor? Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next petition this evening, uh, it is one of two companion cases. This is also a rezoning. It's REZ 24-000012, companion case. This was already heard, was a future land use amendment, uh, FLU 24-00001, and that was approved, um, last year, uh, in November by the Board of Commissioners. And then the third companion case we have is a conditional use permit, which will be heard, uh, tonight if this rezoning is approved, and that is CUP 25-000001. This is located in Piper Road. It's on 16.50 acres. Tax ID number is 0083016. The future land use map is already commercial. The existing zoning is agricultural, residential. The proposed zoning is general commercial. This is in the Alkovi River watershed, and it's in the established suburban core. It's located in Commissioner District 5. Current owner is Hayfields Farm LLC, and our petitioner is Rusty Andrews, and he's represented by Tom Garrett. An applicant's intent is to rezon the property from agricultural residential to general commercial in order to establish an office with outside storage and fleet parking. And again, we're on 16.50 acres, zone agricultural residential. It is located on the north side of Piper Road, and the flume is commercial. Property has an existing gravel drive and three sheds on it currently. And it's a brief history. In September of 2024, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the future land use map amendment, FLU 24-000001, and that was amended from residential to commercial. And that was by a vote by four zero. In November of 2024, the Board of Commissioners also approved the future land use map amendment from residential to commercial. In January of 2025, the Planning Commission tabled this current position, REZ 24-000012 for 60 days, so that District 5 PC's board member could be present. And in March, or last week, March 25th, 2025, the Planning Commission recommended approval of REZ 24-000012 with an added condition that a traffic study must be completed. And this was then by a vote of five zero. And again, our character area, it is the established suburban core, and according to the comprehensive plan, commercial is an appropriate future land use, and commercial, general commercial is also an appropriate zoning, which is what they are asking for. And our side plan analysis, uh, so the side plan we re, we received on March 11th, um, from the applicant, we have the, we offered the following considerations. So the proposal to rezon is a general commercial to establish an office with outside storage and the fleet parking for a construction company. And the fleet will belong just to that company. It's no, um, outside customers that will be coming to park there. And it would be, um, you know, their trucks and other heavy equipment that they have for the construction business. So the side plan shows a proposed shop, office, um, storage yard, and parking area. And there is a 55-foot transitional fence buffer around the proposed use, and there's also a 75-foot transitional buffer around the remaining of the property. So given the existing zoning and development in the area, the proposed zoning may be appropriate for the area. The applicable section in our ordinance is Section 510-547 for retail slash office with outside storage and fleet parking. This is included in your petition, so I won't go th, I won't read through the requirements, but I'll answer any questions. And in conclusion, uh, provided staff's recommended conditions are incorporated into the development of the site. The proposed rezoning to general commercial is considered, is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and with approved zonings in the area. Given the designation of the flume as commercial, staffs of the opinion that the rezoning may be appropriate since it will be consistent with adjacent properties and uses. And recommended conditions, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved to general commercial. Conditional is subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, you must maintain a, obtain a conditional use permit if there will be fleet parking of heavy vehicles for the proposed business. These vehicles may not be parked in the front yard. Two, prior to any new uses, all permits shall be obtained as applicable. Three, you must obtain and maintain a business license as applicable. Four, there shall be a 55-foot fenced transitional buffer with any adjacent residential property around the proposed area used for the business. And there must be a 75-foot transitional buffer around the rest of the property. Five, outside storage shall be limited to 25%. Six, a traffic study must be completed and submitted to Development Services, and this was a request from the Planning Commission. This is the parcel we're looking at. Over here, we see there's some, those are the sheds that are currently on there. We do have, um, this is a fire services facility. Of course, we also, we also have the county's fleet, um, Public Works located here as well. And, uh, this is commercial, things on auto repair shop over here. Of course, we've got, I mean, like warehouses on this end here and more commercial over here. And these areas here we have are zoned agricultural residential. This is vacant. We, some of these lots here, um, have residences on them. Of course, we've got Riverwalk Farms at the back here. And this is just to show you the zoning, so agricultural residential. Uh, we have industrial zoning. Uh, even though this is Public Works, even though it's zoned residential, and of course, the highway commercial zoning, um, are the commercial businesses we have, and the industrial zonings are the warehouses that we have in that vicinity there in the green. And of course, the, uh, Riverwalk Farms, the yellow over there. This is our future land use map. It was approved to be amended to commercial. And we have a residential flume adjacent to it, and then we've got, um, this is a public utility flume, and we've got utilities, and of course, our mixed-use flume as well. Watershed is the Alkovi River, Commissioner District 5. This is our survey that was presented, shows the existing conditions and buildings on the property. This is the proposed side plan that the applicant has submitted. We've got our parking area and proposed buildings that they will be using, and of course, um, parking location, and these are the existing buildings on the property. And we have our transitional buffer to screen from adjacent properties, particularly on, um, to the right here to the, this side. Oh. Are there any questions for staff? If not, this is also a public hearing.
Commissioner Long?
Uh, she, do we have, um, a transitional buffer from behind the building to that existing open area where, where like, that's probably where some of the bigger equipment will be? I'd like to see a transitional buffer from the office building and then like, maybe like a fence or a gate or something, and they'll probably do that, but I would like to put, you know, find out, can they put that, I guess, I don't know if they're here, but have a transitional buffer from the office building to where the fleet's going to be, kind of like behind the building?
So would you, uh, uh, this area behind here, you're talking?
Yeah. Right there, like all the way across. So from the road, you're not looking into junk and, you know, construction material and all that?
Um, okay. So the road is, Piper Road is on this end, so they would have to do like landscaping to shield, um...
Okay. So...
I don't, that's what you were referring?
It comes in off Piper Road at the front where the parking spaces are, and you've got proposed office building?
Yeah. This is the Piper Road here. Um, Brian, if you can use the mouse?
So like, right behind the office building, before you go into the shop building where a lot of things are going to be stored, some kind of transitional gate or some kind of a screen?
Like a fenced area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like a screen, screening is what I'm talking about. Am I not making sense to you?
We can, they can fence them and have high enough to screen, but this is also the transitional buffer here to protect the residential zone on this end.
Let me show you what I'm talking about.
We can...
I'm not making it clear for you, so... Let me just draw it on here real quick. So the buildings here, making something go straight across here for the, before you get, so there's the office building, some type of buffer here and maybe a gate or a fence or something where the storage yard is not seen from the road. Because there are some houses across the street. some houses across the street.
So Commissioner Long was referring to just behind the office building here, so where the fleet will be located in, in this area in the rear? So just having?
Yeah.
Are you like a planted buffer, ma'am, or would a fence?
A fence.
Eight-foot fence would work as well?
With a screen on it.
Opig fence, okay.
I'm just asking about that. I mean, I may make it part of it if we decide to approve it.
Okay, yeah.
And I did have a concern, citizen called me about the traffic study, so I'm glad that's already on there.
Yes, the Planning Commission asks that that be completed.
We'll now open the public hearing, the public meeting. All those in favor of the request are invited to come and address the board. There'll be a total of 10 minutes for those speaking in favor.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to come tonight before we speak. My name is Tom Garrett. I live in Monroe, Georgia, and I'm here on behalf of my boss, Rusty Andrews, who's a partner in Peach State Construction, who is trying to build this new office for our company. Our company is currently located in the county, off of Washington Street. We have an office we lease there, and would like to build our own office to have a bigger, a little bit bigger spot for our company, including the office building, of course, and then the shop behind the office building and the storage yard there. I can answer any questions now, or I can reserve my time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and staff. My name is Sam Hay, and I reside at 625 Cornish Mountain Road in Oxford. I'm a lifelong resident of Newton County and sixth generation, so I assure you that anything that I'm in favor of is, is for the good of, of our county, our community for the, for the long haul. Thank you for what you do for us, Forest. I want to make sure, and, and, and thank you for all that you do for the good of Newton County. I have a contract to sell the subject property to Peach State Construction. Peach State, as you may know, is a longtime contractor in our community. You can see them in public works projects around the community. Some of you may have seen them. They are very, very highly thought of. They are the kind of business that I think we really need to nurture in, in Newton County. They're great people. They provide quality work. They want to invest here, and they want to produce jobs here and add to the tax base in our community. As Ms. Appleweight mentioned in her staff presentation, Peach State has agreed to an attractive and natural buffer and setbacks. They want to be a good neighbor to adjoining property owners. Want to make sure that you know too, that the largest neighboring property owner has met with Peach State and is pleased with their plans and is supportive of the project too. As a quick reminder, Ms. Appleweight mentioned that the project was recently approved unanimously by the Planning Commission and by the, the Board of Commissioners for the future land use map change, and was, of course, recommended in both cases by county staff, but the Planning Commission also unanimously approved the rezoning request last week. The Piper Road Carter, if you aren't aware, is almost all commercial, and it houses many similar kinds of businesses to the proposed use. In fact, the city-county fire training facility is just adjacent to the property, and the county road department is just down the road as well. There are many other businesses that are located on the corridor and, and have been there for several decades, if, if you aren't aware of, of the conditions of, of this corridor. In summary, I'd like to say that the project is a great fit for the neighborhood. Staff has recommended approval. The business is an upstanding member of our, of our community. There's no environmental impact from the project, and neighbors have expressed their approval. I'd like to urge you to approve the request for an attractive investment in our community, and thank you for your consideration, and again, thank you for all that you do for our community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? This portion of the public hearing is now closed. We'll hear from those opposed to the request. Is there anyone opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Ms. Appleweight? See your motion?
Ms. Appleweight, can we, why, why are we doing a separate companion case? I know that they're trying, I mean, we're pretty much putting everything on the first one too.
Yes, because of the watershed?
Okay.
And the type of business it is that requires a conditional use permit.
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't sure of that. And, and it looked like they went to the Planning Commission twice to get the same thing, but for the future land use, did they do that?
They had, yes, they had to amend the future land use map first from residential to commercial, and the Planning Commission as well as the board approved that, and now they're coming back to do the actual rezoning.
Right, I understand. It just seemed like they did one step twice. I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning request, 24-000012 on Piper Road. I do want to add in your conditions that you have in the report, and then also add an additional condition of the buffer that we discussed in the discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Henderson, okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair, I will have to abstain for possible conflict of interest.
Thank you. So, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So our next petition this evening is, is a companion case to the rezoning. It was just approved. It is CUP 25-000001, and the companion cases are REZ 24-000014 and FLU And again, the proposed use is an office with fleet parking of vehicles and equipment along outdoor storage, and it's on Piper Road on 16.5 acres. Tax ID number is 83-16. Future land use is commercial. The existing zoning is now general commercial. Watershed is Alcoa River, and the character areas, the established suburban cores located in District 5, and the current owner is Hayfields Farm LLC. Our petitioner is Rusty Andrews, represented by Tom Garrett. And again, much of the narrative is similar to the rezoning we just went through, just that on March 25th, Planning Commission recommended approval for this cup as well as the rezoning that was done previously. And the applicant's intent is to operate the office with fleet parking, so the vehicles and equipment will belong to that business, and then they're going to have outdoor storage as well, limited outdoor storage. And based on our site plan, we're going to have also the transitional buffers, 55 feet with a fence, and then 75 feet for the remainder of the parcel, and also, as added from the rezoning case, there's going to be a separation, whether it's a fence or some kind of landscaping behind the office building. However, given the existing zoning and development in the area, the proposed use may be appropriate for this purposes' location. The applicant is also required to meet any fencing and general design requirements from the ordinance, as well as any signage requirements per Section 525-020D. The applicable section we have is also the 510, the 547, which is retail space with fleet parking. This is in your package, so I won't go ahead and read through that. And in conclusion, you know, now that the rezoning has been approved, the use that is proposed, it has similar uses adjacent to and in the vicinity. For this particular project, there will be one access point on Piper Road, so that the traffic buildup will not be anticipated as much on that road, and of course, the Transportation Department will have to approve any ingress and egress that will happen. Recommended conditions, so should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit for an office with fleet parking. Conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, the cup will be for an office with fleet parking. B, prior to the allowance of any outdoor storage on the property, the applicant will provide a plan showing the area in which the storage will occur, and it must be approved by Development Services. C, outdoor storage is limited to 25% of the total lot. D, outdoor storage areas and refuse containers shall be screened and buffered so as not to be visible from the public right-of-way or button residential-y zoned properties. E, the truck park is limited to the fleet owned by the business only. F, there shall be a 55-foot fence transitional buffer with any adjacent residential property is, and of course, a 75-foot transitional buffer for the remaining of the property. G, the business must obtain all approvals from the department, as well as obtain and maintain a business license. Age, record service, salvage yard, abandonment, recovery, or repossession of automobiles and trucks, and temporary storage of said vehicles is prohibited. And I, tractor trailer should not be allowed as part of the office fleet. And of course, the Planning Commission added a good traffic study to be completed and submitted to us, and we can also include the condition from, from the rezoning from Commissioner Long, which is to have a buffer or some kind of a fence or partition behind the office building. So we have our aerial. This is the parcel that we're looking at, and of course, we have the other uses in here. Public, we have fire services, we have public works, commercial uses and industrial uses, and then of course, we've got the residential zonings on this side, and the zoner reflects that. Future land use map is commercial. Alcoa River is the watershed. Commissioner District 5 is where it's located, and we have our survey, and of course, this is the proposed concept plan. And if there are any questions? If not, this is a public hearing as well, Madam Chair.
Any questions? We'll now open the public meeting. All those in favor of the request are invited to come and address the board.
Good evening again. This conditional use is for fleet parking for our construction company. It's integral to our business, of course, and would be limited to only vehicles and equipment owned by our company, which is typical for any road construction company. Most of the time, our equipment is not at the yard. It's deployed to different jobs around the state, the state where we do work. So we, we don't typically keep a lot of equipment in the yard, but we do have occasionally work, equipment that's in for service or something like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
My thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor? This portion of the public hearing is closed. We'll now hear from those opposed to the request.
Jeff Bishop, 10144, Twin Oaks Drive, Covington. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. Had some concerns last week at the planning meeting. Some of those have been answered, but what, what's going to happen with the back of the parcel behind the, what he's calling the storage yard? Looks like to me that maybe about 12 or 13 acres is being left undeveloped. They said something about road equipment. That's a lot of equipment, it looks like to me, and my, my only concern is whatever kind of vehicles that they're planning to use by way of their fleet, those, those vehicles are turning into the lot from Piper Road. That's a very narrow road. It has no shoulders. It's very curvy, very hilly, and that stretch of Piper Road east of Deering is about half residential, partly, partly agriculture, about half residential, and the other half towards 36 is commercial. The other side of Piper, that is west of Deering, is exclusively residential, and there's already a lot of residential traffic through there. And like I've said before, in this county, people are flying down these roads now. They don't pay any attention to speed limits or what might be coming over the hill, and I know that we've approved the traffic study, which I think is good, but what's going to be the outcome of that? Are we going to have to widen that road there? I would, I would just like to have an answer to that question about what kind of vehicles are going to be turning into that property, and why is there need for 16 and a half acres there if just the front part of it is going to be developed? So that, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? The public hearing is now closed. Ms. Appleweight?
I'm not trying to keep y'all here all night, but can the applicant answer the question that the gentleman asked? We know we're going to have the traffic study, and the traffic study will determine if additional, if a turn lane is needed or something is needed on that road, correct?
It would.
And, but could you answer the question for the resident in the area about what is going to happen to the, the 16, the, the back portion of the acreage? I mean, is that just going to be equipment back there?
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, the equipment is planned to be contained within the fenced area. That, we don't have any plans for that other property.
It's just the size of the property that you.
It's just, yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought.
Thank you.
And then with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP 25-000001, and I do want to make sure that what I'm talking about is behind the building is a screened partition, where, where we don't get to see equipment and construction material from the road. Okay, so that's what I made, to add that to that, and then all the other conditions that staff has recommended.
See your seat. Commissioner Henderson? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Madam Chair, I want abstention for possible conflict of interest.
Thank you. Okay, the motion passes in favor for. Ms. Appleweight?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our final petition this evening is also a rezoning, REZ 25-000001. Location is Old Atlanta Highway, 11008 and 10970, Old Atlanta Highway. Acres, there are several parcels here, so acreages respectively, 99.17, 68.93, 3.87, 1.91, and 0.998 acres respectively, and it's approximately 175 acres total. Tax ID numbers, 0042003, 0042004, 0042051, 0042050A, and 0042049A. So the future land use currently on the parcels, we have industrial and PRC, which is Parks, Rec, and Conservation. The existing zoning is R2, single-family residential. The proposed zoning is M1, light industrial. This is in the Yellow River watershed. Character areas are emerging suburban, live-work corridors, and conservation and recreation area. This is located in Commissioner District 4. Current owners, we have Doris Fuller and Alan George Fuller, and our petitioner is Austin Brennan, 34th Development. And there's a brief history. On March 25th, the Planning Commission recommended denial of REZ 25-00001 due to concerns of the aim. due to concerns of the impact on water, wildlife, traffic, and ingress and egress. Applicants' intent is to rezone the properties again from R two to M one to allow for three proposed industrial warehouses. And the subject site just goes over what we discussed earlier, it's on Old Atlantic Highway. And the addresses above, it's approximately a hundred and seventy-five acres total, currently zoned, single-family residential. They're also surrounded by residential zonings. And then after the south and the west, some of the properties there are a couple of commercial as well as office and institutional zonings as well. And we'll look at that on the map. And again, the emerging suburban character area, unapproved land use is the PRC as well as industrial. And of course, an appropriate zoning is M one, light industrial. For the live-work corridors, an appropriate land use is industrial. An appropriate zoning is also M one, light industrial. And then the last zoning is a conservation and recreation area, and that's basically where the river and all the wetlands are. And the appropriate zoning for that is the park, rec, and conservation, appropriate land use, sorry, for them. On our side of plan analysis, so based on the site plan that was submitted in January sixteenth of twenty twenty-five to Development Services, the applicant is proposing to rezone properties to M one in order to build three industrial warehouses. The proposed building A is going to be five hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet and contains a hundred and sixty-three auto spaces and a hundred and sixty-seven trailer spaces. Proposed building B is one point one, one, one point one million approximately square feet, contains two hundred and twenty-four auto spaces and a hundred and sixty-three trailer spaces. There is a power easement to the north of the properties, and to the north along Gum Creek, there's a seventy-five foot impervious buffer, fifty-foot undisturbed vegetative buffer, and a twenty-five foot state stream buffer. And then after the west along the Yellow River, we have the fifty-foot impervious and of course a fifty-foot minimally disturbed or naturally landscaped and replanted riparian buffer. And then there's a further fifty-foot natural and undisturbed buffer, so the total of a hundred and fifty feet. And we also have a thirty-five foot undisturbed riparian buffer for the intermittent streams that are further in the property. According to the site plan, building P will impact the stream on the property. And we have, and we can look at that at the site plan shortly. And access points are limited to one on Old Atlanta Highway for the southernmost parcel. And the one, and then there's on Hawkins Drive, there are two access points that are going to be proposed for that road, that drive. So because of the scope and the scale of this project, it triggered a DRI, which is a DRI report, Development of Regional Impact Report. And of course, we had to submit this to Northeast Georgia Regional Commission for review. And they came back with a few recommendations and comments on the project. So as we know, Euphoric Development, and these are their comments that I'm just going to go through briefly. So the Euphoric Development, they're proposing construction of a one point nine million square foot of industrial space on approximately a hundred and seventy-seven acres in Newton County. And it's the properties located north of I twenty off of Old Atlanta Road and is bisected by the CXS Railroad Eastment. And we have the parcel numbers as listed previously, it's zero zero four two, and it's three, four, four nine A, fifty A, and forty-two, sorry, and fifty-one. And this is just a table showing the buildings that are proposed, their square feet, the auto parking spaces, so we have a total of six hundred and eighty-one spaces. And we have a total of three hundred and ninety-four trailer parking spaces. And they also submitted a traffic study and a traffic chips generated. The trips for the total development would be three thousand one hundred and five. Additional morning peak hour trips equal two hundred and fifty-seven. Additional PM peak hour trips total two hundred and fifty-nine. And the study also recommends one entering lane and one exiting lane with a stop sign for control. And this is the control for access along Old Atlanta Highway and Hawkins Drive. So the DRI, the DRI report also offers some other comments and some recommendations. So they have a regional plan that the Northeast Georgia notes that with regard to enhanced mobility and competitiveness, while the project will bring value via employment opportunities, there is an existing warehouse center approximately four miles northeast. The report also notes that the county should keep in mind the ability to house anticipated workers adequately. And further, the report notes that while the project is adjacent to I twenty, the closest access point is two miles away at Almond Road. And the traffic study submitted by the applicant indicates that the proposed site would negatively impact the level of service at the intersections of Old Oxford Road and Access Road and intersection of Crowell Road and Access Road, which is adjacent to the Almond Road I twenty exit. I briefly discussed with our Transportation Director, because he also, you know, reviewed the traffic study. And, you know, my discussions with him, it was noted as well, similarly, is that there the biggest expected impact on the level of service is at the intersection of Old Oxford Road and Access Road. He spoke briefly with GDOT, they are not making any recommendations at this time for any kind of improvements. And they have no specific objections currently for that intersection. With regard to the environment, and the report cautions against the impact of the project on the Yellow River and streams. It states that locating the proposed industrial site next to a major river has the potential to lead to water pollution as industrial runoff waste and sediment could enter the river. This would harm the aquatic life in the river and negatively affect downstream communities that rely on the river for drinking. Additionally, building a warehouse on top of an intermittent stream would disrupt the natural flow of water, which could lead to flooding damage, soil erosion, and destabilization of the stream banks downstream. So the developer would need to be mindful to mitigate potential risks and impacts accordingly. The report also noted in an effort to protect endangered species located in the Yellow River habitat, the proposal should be designed to minimize disruption to the existing streams, the associated wetlands and floodplains to avoid future erosion, flooding, and degraded water quality on site and downstream from the site. Low-impact design measures, and this is what they're recommending, such as bio swales, rain gardens, and other green infrastructure should be incorporated into the project design to mitigate some of these concerns. So in conclusion, the proposed rezoning to M one, it is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and with the approved zonings in the area. The flume is already industrial and would support an industrial zoning. The applicant is proposing commercial or manufacturing uses in the warehouse. However, there are concerns regarding the impact of the project on traffic and the environment. The traffic study completed by A and R Engineering Group indicated that traffic, indicated that the traffic, the traffic study indicated that the proposed site would negatively impact the level of surface at the intersections of Old Oxford Road and Access Road and the intersection of Crowell Road and Access Road, adjacent to the Almond Road I twenty exit. Significant improvements will also be needed on Hawkins Drive, where they are proposing to have two access points, two ingress and egress points for this proposed projects. And further, there are potential impacts on the stream, as one of the proposed buildings is located on an intermittent stream. And further, there are implications for the Yellow River habitat. Recommended conditions, so should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved M one, light industrial, conditional and subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions, they shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to the following, submit a minor plat combining all of the parcels as tax IDs are stated above to be approved by Development Services. B, maintain a seventy-five foot transitional buffer to adjacent properties. C, maintain a hundred and fifty foot impervious buffer along perennial streams. D, road improvements to be completed and approved by the Transportation Department as applicable. E, exterior materials should include bricks, stock, or other masonry accents. F, submit appropriate plans or plaques to be reviewed and approved by Development Services, the Stormwater Manager, Public Works, Newton County Fire Services. And G, we have several state agencies that will be involved because of all of the wetlands on, on the property, as well as, you know, nearby GDOT roads and so on. So they will have to submit appropriate plans, which must be approved by the Water Authority, Newton County Water and Sewer Authority, Georgia Soil and Water Soil Conservation, United, US Army Corps of Engineers, as well as GDOT, as applicable. These are the parcels that we're looking at, again totaling approximately a hundred and seventy-seven acres. We have the two larger parcels here, this is the Yellow River to the west. We have the rail, railroad that is dissecting, you know, the southern portion of it. And then we've got two other, three other properties down here that are also going to be a part of this, so it's a total of one, two, three, four, six properties. I think we have Berry Farms over here, on developed land. We have two homes, this is Hawkins Drive. We've got a couple of residences here, this is on developed land. So this is the zoning, everything in yellow is our two single-family zoning. The gray areas are industrial zonings. Everything in pink and orange-red, those are already industrial. To the south of I twenty, we've got neighborhood commercial as well as industrial. And then of course the other commercial zonings. So they're requesting to rezone the six parcels to industrial, which would be the same as the gray areas here. And as further to the east over here, this is all industrial as well. This is our future land use map, everything in purple is our industrial flume. So the building currently has an industrial flume and then some of, most of the adjacent parcels to the east are also have industrial flumes. The green, that's the Parks, Rec, and Conservation flume, which follows the Yellow River and all the wetlands. This is that stream that is on the property. We have development node on this end here. And at the bottom here, as well, some more PRC, residential in the light yellow, and everything in red is commercial. This is located in the Yellow River watershed, located in District, Commissioner District Four. Our character areas are the live-work in the green, and we have the emerging suburban, and then the parks and rec follows the river and the wetlands in the dark green. This is just a map showing the wetlands and floodplain, everything in green is your floodplain, and the blue are your wetlands. This is a survey showing the same thing, so we've got floodplain and stream coming down here. This is the floodplain area, and these are the, this is the rest of the parcel. This is the proposed concept plan submitted by the developer. So we have our three buildings here. Building B is the one that is sitting on, is, the proposed location shows it impacting the stream. They would have to submit plans to the US Army Corps to see if they would approve that, or if they've properly mitigated it. We have our Yellow River to the west here and the wetlands that go with it, of course, the CSS Railroad, and the southernmost parcel that is separated from the rest, and we have Old Atlanta Highway coming out here. This is Hawkins Drive that is showing here, and then we have the two proposed access points on Hawkins Drive. So they'll have to do, definitely do improvements to Hawkins Drive currently. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, Madam Chair, this is also a public hearing.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. My question is, in the warehouses, what might be stored in the warehouses?
When we spoke with the applicant, they're currently looking at commercial and manufacturing uses right now for the warehouses.
Thank you.
Ms. Appleby, what's that, what's that totally distant from the building to the, to the Yellow River? You have that?
What is it, sorry?
The distant.
If I can see from here. And it has to be at least a hundred and fifty feet in from the Yellow River. So we have our, they're showing the buffer lines here. Right, so the ones closest to the building would be at least a hundred and fifty feet. And I can't, I can't read the map from here. But that would have to be, it has to be at least a hundred and fifty feet, and I think this, this red buffer line is showing that here. If you can see it faintly here, it might be a little better on your screens.
Okay, my next question is, what about the, the little stream there? Would that be included, or?
This one here?
Yes.
Yes, so this one, yes, this, this stream is there as shown on their, on their survey. In order for them to locate a building there, they would have to submit their plans to the US Army Corps for approval for that.
Okay, so would the buffer be included?
It does have a buffer on it, but if they, if the building is allowed to go there, they would have to find other ways to mitigate that so as, to reduce the impact on the stream. And again, those plans are sent up to the Army Corps of Engineers for approval. So yeah, the stream, that stream will go away under the building here.
Okay.
Commissioner Wong?
When, when we recently had a situation, we had somebody that was trying to put in a swimming pool by a piece of water in the county. How many feet did they have to be off that water?
For that particular, if I'm thinking of the same project, they were located off of Cornish, off of Lake Varner.
No, no, this is a, this is a subdivision that you and I dealt with, that they, the subdivision has a stream, I guess, and a river, a lake, I guess, a man-made lake. And they wanted to put a swimming pool behind their house, and they had to be a hundred and fifty foot from that. So now we're going to sit a building in the middle of it. Okay, that's why, I'm just questioning why we would even have a site plan with a building sitting in the middle of a water area.
There are measures that can be put in place once the stream is displaced, but again, those, those plans have to be approved by the state. Because they will ensure that the impact is minimized on that.
We'll now open the public meeting. All those in favor of the request are invited to come address the board. There'll be a total of ten minutes for those speaking in favor. If you just state your name and address, please, for the board.
Sure. Hello, my name is Austin Brennan, I'm with Euphoric Development. And our office is at five five six five Glen Ridge Connector in Atlanta, Georgia. So I'm a local Atlanta resident right now, I'm Atlanta developer. I grew up in Atlanta, I went to high school at Woodward Academy in College Park. I've been in industrial development for about fifteen years. And we just completed a roughly six hundred thousand square foot development in DeKalb County, where we mitigated a creek in a similar situation to this with Army Corps of Engineers. So I'm happy to answer any questions regarding that. We designated this property, or we found this property because of a couple of things. The future land use map was industrial for this property. It's located in industrial area. As you drive by, there's a lot of outside storage in the area. We feel like our Class A industrial buildings will enhance the area. And with our landscape plan, we'll make it very nice. We have nice office entrances, glass-front office entrances to our buildings, similar to what you see in the area and on Dogwood Drive. This property will, once developed, generate roughly seven figures of property tax income for Newton County and could potentially employ over a thousand people for the total development. So we found this property also because it has fairly quick access to the interstate. When we look for properties, we try and find properties that are on the interstate that don't disturb much residential, or if any, and this one checked the boxes for our company. Once you come out of here on Hawkins Drive, which will, we, we will be improving Hawkins Drive, you go over the bridge on Oxford Road and turn on Access Road and head towards the new interchange at Almond, Almond Road. I'll reserve the rest of my time for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Could you state your name and address, please, for the board?
Hello, my name's Hunter Heims, I'm also with Euphoric Development, five five six five Glen Ridge Connector. Just add a couple of things, as Austin mentioned, you know, we did complete a You know, we did complete a traffic study by A&R Engineering. They did recommend improvements to Hawkins Drive, which we are coordinating. We've coordinated with CSX as far as crossing that existing railroad track. We've also coordinated with Newton County Transportation on that as well. A few other things I know was mentioned concerning the creeks. Like, we will go through the Army Corps of Engineer process to get that approved. To disturb that creek, it's a, it's a very lengthy process. Typically takes a year to a year and a half. But we will go through that process to disturb that creek for this building. We've also, to come to the site plan, we've court, we've had several meetings with the Newton County Fire Marshal's Office to coordinate with them on the access to the buildings. It worked out exactly how they get there. They've seen the site plan and so far have approved it. And as far as onsite improvements too, I know it concerns the Yellow River. We'll have several detention ponds on the site. We'll have bio swells. We'll meet, the state has pretty stringent details. They require on sites of this size to meet the runoff reduction. So we'll meet all runoff reduction requirements for development of this size. So nothing gets down to that Yellow River. It hope gets maintained in the big detention ponds you see throughout our site there. As Austin mentioned too, this, this development, when fully to complete, will be a $200 million plus dollar development that we'll be putting into this county. So we're looking to invest the county, bring brand-new Class A industrial development that's going to attract many jobs. I know Commissioner Henderson, you asked a question about what will be stored here. We're building these as speculative buildings, looking to attract a wide range of companies. We don't know who will be going in here, but most of the time it's, there's a lot of companies. No high, any high hazardous materials will go through the Fire Marshal's Office, but we typically don't see that on these style buildings. But yes, that's all I have. If you have any questions, we're around to answer. Thank you.
We have a question. Commissioner Henderson?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Thank you. You answered my question. I think what you, what you said was that you're going to build a warehouse, and whoever you can rent the space to, they probably can house whatever they want to house. You have a retention pond outside, outside of it. So if anything runoff goes into the retention pond.
Correct. So everything will be paved. There'll be no gravel lots. Everything is going to be asphalt or concrete. Everything goes into the underground storm system on our site and then gets dumped into. You can kind of see we've got four detention ponds showing this plan. Very large detention ponds where all that storm water is held.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor? The portion of the public hearing now is closed. Now we'll hear from those who oppose.
Dave Norton of New Bern, co-founder of Save East Newton, a group of concerned citizens, currently over 900 strong. They were just mentioning, I had my paper here, but if you see the retention ponds up there, close to the river, we've seen Yellow River at its worst. Recently, I seen documents pertaining to a lawsuit against Newton County seeking a reversal of denial by this board. It mentioned the county did not provide evidence for denial. So I present to you as evidence from a citizen of Newton County with over 20 years' experience and as is the majority of people in this room, a subject matter on the quali, subject matter expert on the quality of life in Newton County. This proposal, in my opinion, as an expert taxpayer and citizen and lifelong resident of the state of Georgia, does with a board approval, with a board approval violate the standard of review of the Newton County zoning ordinance and the Newton County development regulations, which both state the purpose of the boards is to protect and promote the public health morals, welfare and general welfare and safety of the county. An approval would also potentially violate Division 600, Section 620060 of the Newton County zoning ordinance, which states the board is to review population density patterns, possible increase or overtaxing of the load on public facilities, including but not limited to schools, utilities and streets. Play close attention to the DRI findings and the traffic study, a study done without knowing whom the leasing will be. Could be like manufacturing, or it could be heavy retail distribution like an Amazon. In regard to the amount of trucks, if Amazon were to want to lease it, would management say no? It will overburden the citizens. Of course not. They would say, show me the money. Once it's a warehouse, they can pretty much put in there what they want. It depends on who leases it, as long as it's legal. In the Development Services Report, it mentions, will the project have an adverse effect on nearby areas? Well, if you truly want to know the answer to this, ask those who live by this place. Ask those sitting, crawling in traffic on Crowell Road. Read the DRI report on the river, drainages and wetlands. Read the DRI report on the interstate access. Development Search Services mentioned buffers from a drinking water source, a river that feeds Jackson Lake where our children and grandchildren swim. 50 foot is the width of this room, if you want to get an idea of how close that is to the river. One building is shown on top of a drainage. I believe that's what, the largest building, some type of drainage there. If there's a worse place for a development of this type, I don't know it. So now I say to you that if this board, this county needs us to provide signed, notarized affidavits stating the previously mentioned, I'm sure I have a few friends and neighbors, as all of Newton are my neighbors, who would be willing to provide you with such for evidence in court. I would repeat the same under oath if need be. And I will say that if this Board of Commissioners has our backs, we will have yours. You are our last, you are our last line of defense. Please do not fail us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Thank you, Board. My name's Eddie Goddard. I live at 10942 Old Atlanta Highway, right next door to the proposed building. Tonight I'm here to address major concerns my neighbors and friends in this area have. Number one, the only way to the property is to cross over the Old Oxford Bridge. As you know, there is no on and off exits to get on the, to get on the expressway on this bridge. All the traffic has to turn on the access road to get onto the expressway. When you cross, sometimes it takes a long time, even now, if you try to turn left. There are a ton of big rigs and dump trucks trying to cross. The access road has had at least four deaths in the past two years. One just last Friday, I think, or Thursday. As soon as you turn out, a big rig pulled out and it hit a car. So it's a very dangerous place. And it's just, it's really a crazy place to build a building. Now going on to proposed property, we'll have to turn left on Old Atlanta, which is a dead-end road. Dead ends, when you turn left to go to the property. I live right beside the property. All day, every day, cars are going down there and turning around. Trucks are going down there and backing up because they don't know that there ain't a place to turn around. It's kind of like a dead-end area. And so, but anyway. Number two, the proposed buildings will have to cross over the railroad tracks. They keep talking about they have access at Hawkins Drive. Well, Hawkins Drive is really just a driveway. It's about eight foot wide, a one-car lane that goes back to Hawkins House back up in the woods. There's two houses on the corner. One of them will have to be tore down. That's not in here. But in order to widen the road big enough, they would have to tear down one of these houses. And so, I'm a little nervous. I don't used to being up in front of people. But I'm very concerned with the wildlife. There's about 200 or 300 acres behind this property. And you know, the wildlife area is down on the side here. And I was really shocked when I moved into my house because I can see my, see the expressway from the front. But all this area in the back, I have deer, all kinds of animals come up in my backyard every night. And there's just, it's a big wildlife area back there. And they need this water to live. There's a pond back there. I mean, I don't know what they're going to do with it, put cement on it. But there's, you know, the creeks back there. And so it's just a big wildlife area. And, but the main thing is just too much traffic already, and it's dangerous traffic. There's big dump trucks going everywhere, going to that rock quarry over on Cook Road. But anyway, I'll leave some time for someone else. But I thank you for letting, for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Maya Allen, District Three. I'll be real quick. I think that the board should look at the empty leased warehouse that we have right now on Highway 20. Looks beautiful, but nobody's there. So let's fill that one up before we think about putting anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Shirley Mayo, and I live on Old Oxford Road. I am really opposed to this. I live about a half mile from this property. And there's already tractor-trailer trucks going every which way. Just awful, awful, awful. I live in one of the largest houses on Old Oxford Road. 5,600 square feet, four bathrooms. I don't need to tell you all that. But I'm just, I can't imagine the extra traffic. Now, will Old Atlanta Road be widened? That will have to take place. Because there, and Yellow River is kind of across the freeway. It's not in, I don't know that it's anywhere connected with that particular piece of property. But I totally oppose this because already the traffic is terrible. Big tractor-trailer trucks driving on Old Atlanta Highway. And it would definitely have to, Old Atlanta Highway would have to be widened for trucks to go in there. And what about the railroad track? We've had accidents there. I saw one the other day. Car was straight down by the railroad track. So I called the Highway Department. And I said, I don't know if this is the county's problem or the railroad's problem. So they assured me it was the railroad's problem. It was, so they have filled in that hole. But I mean, Hawkins Drive, all of those little streets that go across the railroad tracks, is, I mean, there's just, there's no need for this kind of building, in my opinion. And I terribly, very much oppose it being there. Because like the gentleman said before, I mean, there's a lot of traffic. And it's big tractor-trailer trucks already on Old Oxford Road and also Covington Highway. So I am very much opposed to it. And I think everybody else that's sitting here is probably opposed as well. I'm sorry I didn't make notes. If I'd have made notes, I'd have more to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Madam Chair and the board members. I just want to say that I listened to all of the risk factors with this project, and I strongly oppose. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have 14 seconds, I believe.
My name's Jackie Howard. I live at 250 Old Oxford Road, right above Ms. Mayo, where she lives. The gentleman before us came up here and was speaking about this. He said the traffic is minimum over there, or the people that live over there are minimum. Apparently, he hadn't ridden around over there. Oxford Road goes all the way through to Oxford. There's several subdivisions over in there.
I'm sorry, sir, but that was all the time.
Ma'am?
That was allotted. The 10 minutes was, uh...
I'm telling you about the traffic that's over in there. There's bukus of it coming from Oxford Road.
I'm sorry, it's ended.
The time for public comment, public hearing's been closed. We, we heard your concern.
Thank you.
I can't say what I got to say.
No, sir. We have 10 minutes for public comment and stuff.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Appleby.
Ms. Appleby?
Yeah.
I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get this over.
Commissioner? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes, ma'am. But first of all, just let me say, I've been on this board a few years. And of all the years I've been here, I know that I took this seat lightly. I always thought about the community that I represent and the peoples in it. And I always have, to the best of my ability, worked towards the needs of the community. And with this plan, you know, it's a danger, I think, to our water system, possible runoff. And then the warehouse building, who knows what they may house in it? We don't know. I don't know. So because, you know, what I heard was that he said that whoever wanted to lease out a space in it could and house what they want in it, you know? That's part of, I think that's part of earning some money for your warehouse that you built. And I tell you, and I lived back over on Old Atlanta Highway. And I walked through those roads as a teenager. I lived with my aunt for a few years. And I knew all about over there. And I've seen most of the people. And most of the people housed, I know them at that particular time by name. And so I just, I just said all of it, just to say this. I'd like to make a motion to deny.
All in favor? Motion denied.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we are moving forward to item number 11. We're going to reconvene at item number 11. We have our district attorney, Mr. Randy McGinley. He's going to present on behalf of the Newton County DA's office is requesting approval to hire a victim witness assistance, excuse me, witness assistant within the current budget year to start May 2025.
Morning, everybody. Or I said, good morning. It's been a long day. Good evening. It's way past morning. And I'll try to be pretty brief. I think y'all know I talk fast. But just so you guys know what the victim witness assistant position is due in our office. First of all, we have a statutory duty under Georgia law and the Crime Victim Bill of Rights to provide certain services to victims. A few years ago, y'all may remember something called Marcy's Law that was passed by the Georgia Legislature, actually in addition to the Georgia State Constitution that mandates a constitutional, state constitutional duty for us to provide certain services to victims as far as notifying them, saying contact with them, allowing them to come to court, making sure they know they can speak in court. And so there's a lot of things that we must do for victims in our job. In Newton County in 2024, we opened over 2,000 victim cases. And that's cases. That doesn't involve how many victims there are. As many of them involve multiple victims. I'll tell you, last Monday, in the courthouse, we had one courtroom was an all-day sentencing hearing for a murder with multiple female members that drove up from Florida. We were also picking two juries. One is a murder that just ended in a guilty verdict yesterday. And the other was a child abuse neglect case that is still going on with five children that are the victims. And so we had victim advocates all over the office, all over the courthouse, staying very busy, trying to coordinate everything for those victims of those cases, but also trying to still work up and move forward with the cases we have coming into the office. In the first three months of 2025, which is basically where we're at, our software system that tracks our cases also tracks pretty much most of our activity. We made over about 8,000 contacts with victims in three months. And that's letters, forms filled out, phone calls, notes, emails sent to victims in our office. And that's letters, forms filled out, phone calls, notes, emails sent to victims in our office, um, or by our office. That's done currently by five victim advocates in the office. Um, and so one of the major reasons why I'm asking for a sixth victim advocate, and I'll kinda get to the, the funding behind it here in a second, why I'm asking to go ahead and do this now, um, as this was part of my request for the next budget year for FY twenty-six. Um, but I'll tell you, the Victim Services Director and Senior Victim Advocate in our office have been in our office for a long time. Um, our Victim Services Director, I think started when she was eighteen years old, um, and has been in the office a long, long time. Um, she has a lot of duties. She currently is running an entire caseload of handling cases of victims in one, one of the five courtrooms that we have. Um, she also is in charge and is our head person for our GCIC audits, which if y'all know anything about GCIC audits, they're not a lot of fun. It's a lot of work. Um, she is also the person who's in charge of her five percent or LVAP, which is Local Victim Assistance Program, um, funding. And I'll explain that, 'cause that's where the funding for this position's gonna come from. Um, and, and moving to that is essentially, um, during, when COVID happened, we used to, before COVID, we, whenever, when someone pleads guilty to a criminal offense, they pay fines and fees. Um, five, they pay an additional five percent, which is what is this local victim assistance program, which is in fifteen twelve, I think one thirty through one thirty-four, um, that goes to the DA. And I'll explain what the statute says to you guys here in a second. But, um, when COVID happened and court kinda shut down, that fund almost went to zero. Um, that fund was being used to reimburse some expenses from our office to the county. Um, and that changed when court essentially stopped for a period of time. We were having court maybe one day a week and five to ten cases as opposed to two to three days a week with seventy or eighty cases each day. Um, and so that's fun though, as we've kinda gotten away from COVID. Obviously, we're five years past it, well, not past it, five years past the beginning of it. Um, that fund has increased back up to the point that it needs to be used and needs to be used in appropriate fashion. Um, what OCGA fifteen dash twenty-one dash one thirty-two subsection A states, um, how that money can be used. And essentially, as A one discusses, that it can be used, um, if there, if the county has a certain program that is certified by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Um, there's not such a program here in Newton County. And so with that, by statute, the money goes to the DA's office for the purpose of defraying costs of a, of victim assistance activities carried out by the DA's office. Such funds shall be paid over in the same manner as other county funds paid for operations of the District Attorney's Office and shall be in addition to rather than in lieu of any other such funds. Um, and I, I'll tell you, there is, and I can go into details if it's necessary, but we have sufficient money in that fund to pay for, um, this employee that I'm asking to go ahead and start now. Um, I've spoken to, uh, Ms. Brittany with finance about that. And my intention would be that that, um, entire position, the salary and employer costs, um, that come with it, be paid for out of that, what I call the five percent fund or LVAP. It's just easier to call it the five percent fund. Um, and so that would not cost the county any additional funds. It would be reimbursed. Um, we are currently bringing it, average over the last eighteen months, more than enough to cover the cost for that, for this position and have sufficient funds in case there is some, uh, dip in the amount we get every month, which I don't foresee happening just because we are extremely, extremely busy in the court system right now. Um, and so with that, I'll ask, I'll answer any questions, but essentially it is something the statute gives this money to the DA's office to use for the specific purpose. Um, and that's what I'm asking, um, just for the approval to use those funds that the statute gives me the ability to use. So, any questions?
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, um, Mr. McGinley for giving us that presentation. Um, I'm looking here and you mentioned the funding source. We have here that it's general fund and crime victims fund, but crime victims fund is only five percent. So is that ninety-five percent coming out of the general fund?
That's calling it what the, what, that's calling it the five percent fund. That, that's the name of it. The, the reason why it's a five percent fund is when someone pleads guilty, it has a thousand dollar fine. They pay a five percent tack-on fee. So I'm, I'm sorry if I misled you on that, I didn't mean to.
No problem.
It is a five percent tack-on fee and that's, it's called the five percent fund, is what we call it. So, so the entirety would come from the five percent fund.
Okay, so what we have here where it says the funding source would be general fund and that particular, uh, crime victims fund five percent, it's not both, it's all coming from this crime victims fund five percent?
Correct.
Okay. And what is that total salary and with the benefits?
I think right now, so, right now, step, it's a grade fourteen position, um, which I believe step one is forty-one thousand and some change. Um, and I believe from what Brittany said, it'd be around the below to mid, what? Sorry. Sixty, uh, that, below to mid sixties, is that correct? That's correct. Okay. Obviously, that depends on what, whoever's higher, what the insurance costs are for that person. Um, but somewhere around that amount. Um, and over the last eighteen months, that fund has brought in about seventy-seven hundred dollars per month. Now, there are some other costs we already have. We pay for victim advocate cell phones and things like that out of it. Um, but even that, you know, even if we go down to seven thousand a month that we, that fund brings in, that more than easily covers a salary plus employment costs of somewhere in the mid-sixties.
Okay. That answers my question, I just wanted to clarify because I saw general fund down here as well, so I wanted to see how much was coming out of the general fund.
That may just have been my mistake in, in the submission.
But you clarified that it's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of this crime victims fund five percent, one hundred percent, and it would be no, uh, cost to the actual county at all?
Correct. And, and I guess just because there, I know there's been some talk of salary structure changes and things like that. Based on my meeting with HR, even where victim witnesses would be placed, if that happens, that would still, we would still be within the amount of money that we're bringing in per month, um, of that fund to pay. So, I mean, we have plenty of buffer, I guess, with what we're bringing in per month currently. And like I said, I don't foresee that slowing down anytime soon with how busy we're in court.
Great. Thank you for the clarity and thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
I, I did, I did put in a request to Brittany and, um, she did email me back, 'cause I was a little confused too of the way those requests read sometimes. And she did assure me, 'cause I was concerned about how Phil five eighty-one, what we're gonna be going through about adding positions, uh, 'cause that's gonna be really hard, uh, this next year. But she did let me know that there was plenty in the fund and it would be funded and that you guys bring in enough money per year to, to have this position. So I felt very comfortable that she's been working with you to make sure that this would be covered.
Yes, ma'am.
That answered. Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this position, uh, for the District Attorney's Office for victim service funds, uh, with the, with it paid out of the, I lost my wording, hang on, uh, the LVAP?
LV, LVAP, yes, ma'am.
LVAP, Special Revenue Fund. And this position would fund till the end of this year and then you've put it in the budget for the, for this, uh, budget year. And then you've put it in as a new position for next year's budget.
That's correct, I did. Yes, ma'am.
We have a second? Commissioner Cooper, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, pass.
Thank you. Good seeing you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, sorry. Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number twelve. We have Ms. Trudy Henry, Director of Covington, Newton, nine one one. She's going to give an update on the Covington, Newton County nine one one center project progress and presentation of the guaranteed maximum price proposal submitted by Sunbelt Builders.
Good evening. Um, I just come to y'all tonight to kinda update you on what's going on. Back, back in March of last year, um, the board gave us to go ahead to work with the city and go out for RFQ. We did go out for RFQ and in August, it was awarded to Sunbelt. We've been working with Sunbelt, um, since then and this is what the proposed nine one one center will look like. Really nice, really exciting. And then the next one is the floor plan that we've come up with. Um, just kinda briefly, the, the right is, um, the office area. The left side is the, um, nine one one center, the actual radio room. It's a little more hardened, built, um, to withstand the weather and all that. And then the next slide, um, I think y'all got a copy of that, is the maximum, um, price guarantee. Um, when we went out for RFQ, we did put a five million dollar limit on the building. From the time August, when it was awarded until now, prices have gone up this much. So, um, prices are continuing to increase. Um, I just wanted to update y'all, I know there's a lot of new faces on this board. I'm just kinda get everybody, um, where we're at with the project. The Facilities Authority is gonna be the, the bonder of the project. Uh, we're still waiting on, kinda word on that. I don't know if anybody has an update, I haven't heard much about that recently. But I wanted to give, um, y'all an update and just kinda get your blessing to keep moving forward with the process. And I'll update y'all as we continue to get information.
And, and I would, I'll give you all a quick update. Uh, y'all might remember, um, those of you who were on the board last year, we brought to you a request to request the General Assembly to change, to make modifications to the legislation creating the Newton County Public Facilities Authority. That has been done, it has passed the House and the Senate. It's awaiting the governor's signature. Typically, traditionally, the governor kinda signs all the local bills toward the end of session. So you will be having the bond issue presented to the Public Facilities Authority, which is you, in the, in the next month or so. We'll prob, we will probably have an organizational meeting for you to elect among yourselves officers and then after that, we'll actually approve the bond.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, next item we have on the agenda is item number thirteen, presented by Ms. Ashley Best, Newton County Extension Coordinator, a MOU or Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Annual Financial Agreement of the Contract of Newton County Extension four H. Uh, Charlene Scott with the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia, on behalf of UGA Cooperative.
Thank you, Latonya. I'm Ashley Best, I'm the County Extension Coordinator and Department Head for UGA Extension four H. I'm requesting to renew the contract for our four H position. Um, this contract, uh, budget item has already been allotted for in our budget and it's just an annual agreement that I'm requesting approval for.
Okay, is there any questions? I have a motion? Commissioner Mason, is there a second? Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Passed unanimously.
Thank you. And, um, Chairman Hayes, we have one more signature, if I could request that from you very quickly.
It's more of a certificate, come over our four Hers, she was the last minute add.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Madam Chair, we have Chester Clegg, the Transportation Director. He has two presentations this evening, number fourteen and fifteen. Number fourteen, Public Works Request the Board, uh, Board to Authorize the Chairman to Execute an Agreement with GDOT for the Use of the Proposed Hawk High-Intensity Activated Crosswalk Signal. And then also number fifteen, Public Works Request the Board to Authorize the Chairman to Ex- Execute the Easement and Development Agreement with the Point Ground Development, Developer.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, after years of working on it, uh, GDOT has agreed to, uh, put a hawk signal at the, um, cricket frog trail crossing on the bypass. And, um, if you don't know what the hawk signal looks like, it has the, the two red bulbs at the top and one below it and it, they blink back and forth and, uh, people or bicyclists who are crossing, they can, they can push the button and the, it'll actually stop the traffic, like a, like a red light. So, um, they're putting it up at no cost to the county. Um, we, uh, I have offered, we do have a set of, of hawk signals, actually two sets on our, uh, Public Works yard and I've offered it to them and I think they're gonna use that to put it up. It's about a hundred fifty thousand dollar, uh, install. But, um, we are required to, um, provide, uh, power to the hawk signal, so that's the agreement that, that needs to be signed by the chairman.
Is there any questions? We have motion?
Motion authorized.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion pass unanimously.
Um, the other item is, um, at Ramway and Crowell Road at the high school. Um, the Point Grand Development, um, has, um, um, made a traffic light at the intersection, um, where it's warranted to be put in and the developer is putting it in at no cost to the county. But it requires a, um, pretty, um, extensive agreement, construction agreement that, um, our attorneys put together for us. So, we, um, I'm requesting that the board approve, that the chairman to sign that agreement with the, um, with the developer. It's a bond, it's a, it's a bond agreement. They're putting up the money, um, and we'll be installing the, the signal.
Any questions? Motion? Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Cooper and Commissioner Henderson, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous in favor. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number sixteen. It's gonna be presented by our interim chair, excuse me, interim county manager, Mr. James Brown. It's a MOU or Memorandum of Understanding. Friends of Newton County Miracle League is requesting approval of the agreement for the Miracle League All-Star Weekend, May second through May fourth, in the amount of fifty thousand.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Uh, this is the, going back to August of twenty, August twentieth of twenty twenty-four, where the board had already approved a fifty thousand dollar, um, donation to the Miracle League. This is just coming back because of the postponement. Get the right MOU agreement, um, by the county statute to make sure that we, uh, adequately give those funds the appropriate way.
Do we have any questions? We have a motion? Did you get that? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Thank you, pass unanimously.
Madam Chair, we are at item number seventeen. It's gonna be also again presented by our, um, Acting Director of Water Resources, uh, interim county manager, James Brown. This is the Cornish Creek, uh, Upgrades for Work Package number two in compliance with Newton County Purchasing Policy. A second request is required for the final approval.
Mr. Brown?
Good evening again. Uh, this is just to follow in the purchasing po- policy that, uh, per, uh, contractor this size has to come back to the board twice, uh, for this, the, for the reading. Uh, so this is the, the project to keep the Cornish Creek Upgrade, uh, project going on schedule for the Opera, um, Funding Mechanism. So this, we released, uh, package number one, uh, earlier this year. Uh, this is package number two. We're still working on the final package, which we're hoping to have in another sixty days.
Okay, is there any, uh, questions? We have a motion? Which? Your second, okay. You got that. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're at number eighteen with citizen comments. This area is open to the public for a three-minute maximum, following the posted rules and public comment guidelines. Again, this is open to the public. Each citizen will have up to three minutes maximum.
Okay.
Dave Norton of New Bern, once again. Uh, recently I put on my Facebook page about, uh, possible mentioning of a boycott of the City of Social Circle. Well, I was kind of accused of being, of blackmailing someone and that the boycott was hurt the businesses in the area. That's not my intent. Uh, the intent is that the cities are using their zoning to get around our zoning by annexing our property into their city to get around our zoning. That was my purpose for it. And I just wanted to clear that up. If you do business in a city, a city, what makes a city is its citizens and the businesses in that city. And if you go to a car, uh, repair shop and And if you go to a car, a repair shop and they charge you for something that you didn't need, you don't go to that business no more. If the city does something you don't like, you go to another city. I have no problem shopping in Eaton or Madison. But the whole deal is for a city, I don't even know if there's a word for it, I wouldn't call it blackmail. I don't believe that would fit the definition. But the City of Covenant and the City of Social Circle want to use their laws against us and that's the reason I'd put that up. Just wanted to clear that publicly. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, long night. My name is Mark Gardner. I live at 650 West Macedonia Church Road in Oxford, Georgia. And I have a, prepared a statement that I would like to read to you. It has a number of questions in it. My questions are regarding the proposed development plan on the property of, off of Bird Road. My questions arise out of, and will be in reference to the informal meeting held Monday night, March 24th, about the Tomlow Farms project. There's been some confusion about this development being approved. There were comments made that a development had been approved about two years, or this development had been approved about two years ago. And I was just, I don't know if that's true or not. If so, how, I ask, how was it approved without public comment? At the meeting Monday, at the Monday night meeting of the 24th, approximately 40 to 50 residents showed up. A question was raised. Was anyone aware of the project? And not one person indicated that they had heard of it. And the overall sentiment expressed by those attending was that they would have strongly objected to a plan to put 93 homes on lots, many of which, if not most, are on just a little over a half acre, constituting a, what we would call a high-density development for our area. At the meeting, it was put forth by the developers that they were seeking a variance for the project. They were seeking to make changes to the original development plans by eliminating one of the entrances. They explained that by moving the road, it would increase a few of the lot sizes and save the county a great deal of money by not having to maintain the entrance in question. They said that they had consulted with the County Fire Marshal's Office and the County Works Department and that persons in these departments had communicated to those seeking the variance that these changes were acceptable. Has there been any discussion about the ordinances they are seeking a variance on and why the ordinances exist in the first place as it relates to the, to a development of this nature? Is there a rush to sacrifice public safety for some expediency or financial motive? I would request and believe that many here would like to know the reasoning behind the justification for these department recommendations.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Oh, wow.
Three minutes is a...
I'm not even halfway through. Okay. Well, maybe that's for next time then.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else?
Good evening again. I just want to request reconsideration and recommendations for denial because we went through all of the proper planning. So we thought, in order to move forward with this, our concerns, we saw the neighbors come out. We've spoken with every one of those neighbors. They told us that they did not oppose, but they had some concerns. We addressed their concerns as applicable as they asked us to. Then they've, they actually put false claims saying we've been having parties out there, which we have not been because as we stated, we only go there on the weekends, sometimes through the week. And we go our family. So we don't have parties. We don't drink. So it's just been false claims about the planning or what we're planning to do with the property. Items that they listed were not even on our concept plan. So it's concerning that they've really come up with things saying that we've done, which we haven't done. So...
Yes. And add to what my wife said. I just want to, we bought that property for three, about three years ago from Leigh Anne. She was actually the one that sold it to us. And all we have is manicured the property and we have a lot of people ask to want to come out and visit the property. So we wanted to do the right thing with all the silos and everything. The property looked gorgeous now and people just want to come visit. And so we were just trying to, to do the right thing. And so we, we want recommendations. How, you know, should we deny people coming out there to see it? Or how, we have a major garden, we have about an acre garden that we grow gardens, I mean, plants every year that we give to the community. So a lot of people want to come out there. So we're just trying to figure out what we need to do because there was, I mean, it was totally shocking. It is agriculture piece of land. We enhanced the property. It's totally manicured and it's our property, but we can't, you know, we want to do the right thing to it. So we just need your recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you for listening. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any comments?
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Alena Sanders. And first, I forgot to congratulate you last time. Congratulations, Madam Chair, and I already congratulated you, Mr. Commissioner. Good evening. I stand before you because I'm speaking on behalf of the People Party. Not Democrat, not Republican, it's the People Party. The issue is safety. And the issue is, on the west side of Newton County, which is the most densely populated county, the area of the county, we don't have sirens, enough sirens for people to hear when a tornado is coming around us. This was brought before this Board in 2021 and the emergency director verified there was not enough sirens on the west side of Newton County because of the dense of population. We're in 2025. We don't have sirens. I had a lot of residents who contacted me and a lot of residents posted on Facebook and all the social media said we heard nothing. Everyone is not technologically savvy. They're not on social media. And if you're in your home when a tornado hits and your phone is not with you, you don't hear the sirens, that's an issue. But other parts of the county can because they're not mostly dense. And we need to look at that and make it a priority because safety is supposed to be a priority of this Board. It is written. So it's been since 2021 and we still have not addressed the issue of sirens. I also want to go back to the benches out there. I'm able to sit out there and see what's going on. You all sit in your nice plush seats because I've been in that seat. You have residents complaining, elders who out there complaining of their posture not being able to sit in those seats as they listen to you all. There used to be cushions on those seats. Nobody put them back. So if you want to take care of your residents, please take care of the issue. It's, it's really simple to take care of. The warehouse situation, you all know that I was a big proponent of warehouses not coming into our community. District Three has so many warehouses to where they are empty. We fought for them and this Board approved a warehouse that has not even been built yet. And that property was rezoned and it's just sitting there. And anybody can come behind that developer and purchase that property and put whatever they want because you approved that as own. So we need to look up at that when we're putting warehouses in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
I thought I was done for the evening, Maya, District Three. I ran out to talk to Mr. Clegg about the sidewalks on the west side. And he told me that because it's federal money and not local money, it takes longer and we're in the preliminary stages. And I asked, how long does that normally take? He said, a couple of years. Well, this money was provided by Hank Johnson in 2020 or 2021. He's gave me a date of, of the preliminary being completed, 2027. To me, that's a problem and we need to look into that. Also, Crowell Road is not going to be extended until 2040. So we need to keep that in mind as people are coming with developments. Also, the West Side Community Center. I'd like to see some movement on that. You've heard about what's happening to our kids. Salem, Rockdale, Newton, they need something to do and they need a place to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Okay, if not, then we will go to our Commissioners' comments. Commissioner? Thank you. Thank you. How about Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a few. I wanted to ask the community to keep those families in prayer that resulted in the shooting incident that took place back on March the 20th at Denny Dobbs Park. There were three students that were impacted by this. I'm sure a host of family, friends, neighbors, community. So please keep those families in prayer, especially one that, there was a fatality that took place. I did have a nonprofit organization to reach out to me and this nonprofit organization was very shaken by this incident that took place and now would like to partner with me. And so we're going to start working on some things to help address those concerns within our community, with our youth. So I'm excited to be able to actually do that and to be able to address some of those concerns as well. Also, we are going to start our, my annual Movies in the Park that we have at Denny Dobbs Park will start in May. And we'll have May, June, and July. So look out for those. I'll be making additional announcements as the time draws nigh to that. Also, we are in the process, and you may or may not have heard, the widening of Salem Road or 162. That is definitely taking place. And you, if you've driven down Salem Road, you're probably beginning to see clearing of trees, vegetation. The edge of the roadways is being prepared for relocation of underground and overhead utilities such as AT&amp;T, Georgia Power, Atlanta Gaslight, Comcast, and many others as we begin to, as Georgia Department of Transportation begins to really work on that project of widening Salem Road and 162. Ms. Allen mentioned sidewalks. I'll be happy to actually state that Georgia Department of Transportation has stated in that widening, they are putting sidewalks. Also, we are looking at the widening of Brown Bridge around that same area. Sidewalks will be included in that as well. And so I just want to put it out there to let our residents know that sidewalks is of major importance to us. And so we're trying to do our best to make sure that when these projects are coming for widening of these major corridors, that we are including those sidewalks as well. And hopefully, as we continue to move forward, we'll have sidewalks in a lot of other major corridors so that as our community is expanding and growing, that'll definitely be something that we can have. And even in subdivisions, there are some subdivisions that have sidewalks. And so that's definitely a priority for this Board as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper? Okay, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. I'm just, this evening, asking everybody to lift Mr. Shepherd's family up in prayer. He's, he was really and truly a legend, I know to me, because he was like a mentor. He was my first activist that I ever know who would come to me and we would talk about different things. So, but if we could pray for his family and lift him up, I think that was God, people wants, what God wants us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Just real quick, I just want to say thank you to my Board of Commissioners and how great it is to work with all of you. We don't always agree, but I feel like this is a great Board. We're doing great things for the citizens of Newton County and I know we'll continue to do that. And it's a new day in Newton County and I'm excited about it. And, and thank, welcome to all the new members and we're here to get things done. We're tightening the purse strings. We got all that coming up next and I'm just proud of you guys and I appreciate it and I enjoy working with all of you, including you, Patrick. Okay, thank you. James definitely doing an outstanding job for us. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you and good night.